Okay, so I will call this three P M. Workshop. I will open this three P M workshop for conditional use permit training and look forward to all of this. Our regular board of be well, we will have a board of equalization meeting at four P M and then four oh five, our regular commission meeting will. Start, so we will open this to Mr. Colmore and Mrs. Weezer, Miss Weezer.
All right, thank you. Um, I just wanted to introduce Jordan Colomar is with the, um, as you can see on the screen, the office of the property rights ombudsman. And he agreed to come down here this evening to do a training for you all on conditional use permits specifically. And the reason that I asked him to come down and do this was you do have a few additional use permit applications coming to you hopefully at your next meeting. So I always like to, uh, do an annual training on various things for commissioners and, um, and, uh. So Jordan agreed to do that. And then on the February twenty fourth, uh, Rob Terry also from the ombudsman's office is going to come down. And do another workshop, which I hope you all can join or at least join his watch later. Uh, just a general like planning one O one training. Uh, it'll be a joint, uh, will be at the planning commission, but you're welcome to attend and ask questions or be on Zoom or whatever you would like to do. So this one is specifically on C U Ps, uh, but if there's time at the end, uh, Jordan says you can ask questions about other things. But, um, I'm gonna let him take over and I'm gonna sit in the audience and learn a little bit myself, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for having me, everyone. Um, again, my name is Jordan Colomar. I'm the lead attorney in the ombudsman's office. Uh, has anyone worked with the ombudsman's office before? Great, Steven a little bit, right? Uh. Then this, uh, this slide will be helpful then. So we always like to just have a slide about our office. What is an ombudsman? How long have we been around? What do we do? Um, so our office been around since just before two thousand. Uh, we're an independent neutral state funded agency, uh, that helps resolve disputes that, uh. Property owners and citizens have with government. So we work with state, uh. Local county, uh, we work up the, you know, governments throughout the state. Uh, there's three attorneys in the office. Um, and this is, these are kind of the main things that we do, right? So, uh, we work in two primary areas, um, takings and eminent domain. Uh, when the government needs private property for a public, road widening or something like that, those scenarios, property owner can request, um. Uh, mediation through our office and we can help the parties, uh, resolve their dispute, um, if they, if they want to do it through mediation. Um, we provide advisory opinions on land use development questions. We have them right now involving Grand County. Uh, hopefully we can be helpful in resolving that issue. Uh, we go around the state, we provide a lot of education. Um, so we try to be really accessible. You saw my contact information there upfront. Um, give us a call. There's three attorneys in the office, also Rob, who, uh, is our statewide training coordinator and you'll hear from him in a little bit or in a week or two. Um, but those are kind of the four primary areas that our office works in. We like to just put that up there so you know. Who we are and what we do as far as a resource. Uh, give us a call if we can be helpful or you have questions. So. With that, we'll get into, do you have any questions initially about the ombudsman's office or what we do, things like that? Okay.
Just noting, there may be times that we, my office may disagree with the position of the ombudsman's office. So note that if you're reaching out to the ombudsman's office, really the conversation should start, um, with my office so that we can give you counsel. And there may be, uh, additional follow up that we can get. Ombudsman's office, they are, uh, experts on this. They do provide great insight. However, there may be positions that the county may have to disagree or may want, uh, a differentiation between a decision that they've made historically. So please look at my office, um, and so we can be helpful in those issues.
All right, um, so getting into conditional use permits. When we talk about conditional use permits, can you hear me? Is the microphone directed properly?
That as close to you as possible. It's not a wonderful microphone.
Yeah, it's pointed at me, so hopefully we're good to go. Um. Whenever we talk about conditional use permits, I think it's helpful to first talk about the distinction between, excuse me, between legislative and administrative decision making. Especially whereas you guys are the county commission, so you are the legislative body for the county. Um, uh, there are certain administrative decisions, decisions that the state has taken away from the legislative body, right? Subdivisions, as you're aware, the county commission, city councils, they're no longer involved in making decisions on those administrative applications. But with other administrative applications, uh, the state has still left it to each local government to decide who the land use authority is, right? And in talking with Amy, my understanding is that, uh, for all conditional use permits, you are the land use authority, so you make that decision. But you make it in an administrative capacity. Um. We, we talk in our office about wearing different hats. I know in every local government, multiple people wear different hats, right? As decision makers for an accounting commission, it's important to understand which hat you're wearing, um, in consideration of which application is before you, right? Um, so I, I wanted to kind of go over this and just talk briefly about legislative versus administrative decisions that will help inform. The, the, the more specific discussion about conditional use permits. So a conditional use permit application is an administrative application. Um, so we're looking at the, the right side of the screen, right? Uh, when you're making legislative decisions, there's some, you know, um. Examples of certain types of legislative decisions, and that really is kind of the bread and butter. When we, when we get back to civics class, right? That's what the legislative body does. If they, um, uh, make laws of general applicability based on the weighing of broad competing policy considerations. So you guys decide what the rules are as a legislative body for your county. Uh, we're talking about your general plan, your land use ordinances and what they say, any development standards you have, your zone map. Uh, it whether or not to annex, and then in certain cases, if, if development agreements make new rules, then development agreements are legislative, right? Um, and so when we talk about, I'm an attorney, right? So we think that good decisions are decisions that are according to the law, right? So we always talk about, okay, how would a court look at your decision in deciding whether or not you've made a legal decision, right? The, the standard of review that they apply is number one, it has to be whatever decision you make, whatever rule you put in place. Has to be consistent with applicable state federal law, can't be illegal. So for instance, if the state has stepped in and said something about land use. You can't contradict that, right? So, uh, A D U's was something recently that the, the state stepped in and said, hey, you gotta allow A D U's under these condition accessory dwelling units. And so you can't enact an ordinance that contradicts what state law says about that. Otherwise, if, if they've left you the discretion to make rules about, you know, your zones, uh, where commercial is located or residential, things like that. What your setbacks are, height requirements, uses within those zones, uh, as long as your decision is reasonably debatable to be in the public interest. The courts say, yep, that stands, right? We don't disturb that decision. It's legal. Um. So a few considerations, uh, like I just said, um, when you're making legislative decisions, don't violate state or federal law. Make sure that your decision is reasonably debatable to be in the public interest in accordance with. Ludma, have you guys heard of Ludma? The term Ludma, land use development and management act, right? Um, and then really what you're doing in legislative decision making, you're attempting to strike an appropriate balance between the public interest and the private needs. Um, thank you for your service, by the way. Um. Uh, the role of the public in legislative decisions, really, uh, you should listen to them and everything they have to say and their preferences and their desires, right? And you should weigh them according to what you believe to be, uh, the appropriate decision, right? Um, and then you can also receive input for the purpose of gathering facts and evidence to support your decisions. Um, now moving over to administrative decisions now. With an administrative decision, when someone brings in an application for a subdivision or a C U P. Um, a site plan, building permits, uh, variances, certain types of development agreements. Um, at that point, you're not making the rules. You're not deciding what you want the rules of the county to be. You're simply just making sure that the application that's been submitted applies with the rules that are in place, right? Um, and so the, the legal standard of review is different, that scenario. Uh, similarly, it has to be consistent with the law. And now we're talking about federal law, state law, your local ordinances, and then any vested rights that they have. Um, and we can talk about vested rights. By the way, I intend this to be a conversation, so speak up, interrupt me if you have questions. Um, but let's, I, I'm happy to get derailed at any point if there's something that interests you. Um, sorry, I should have set that up wrong. Uh. And then regarding factual determinations and discretionary decision making, so we'll talk about that a little more, especially in the context of C U Ps. Um, your decision has to be, at this point, it has to be supported by substantial evidence in the record. Um, so whereas, you know, if someone says on the legislative side and you're deciding whether or not to approve a rezone from residential to commercial. If someone says, you know what? I don't think commercial is right in this area. That's a preference and an opinion, right? You can listen to that and making a legislative decision. Those same preferences and opinions are off the table once you get to a administrative decision. So if someone brings in an applicant, a site plan for a McDonald's in a commercial zone that says drive through restaurants are approved permitted use. And someone stands up and says, well, I don't think this is the right place for McDonald's. That decision's already been made, right? Um, and so you can't, you can't consider that preference, right? And I have, I should, I should go show my slides on this one. You can't consider that preference anymore, right?
Of course.
Question.
Yes, now. If, uh. I understand that they, if they just come up and they bring a, uh, you know, that it's a legislative decision, but if somebody comes up and brings up. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not talking into my mic. I apologize. Uh, if someone comes up and asks. Presents a statement where they're saying at this location at this time, this McDonald's will not. Is not a, will create a safety issue because since this, uh, C U P was put in place. There has been a moderation in the da, 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 and so therefore it doesn't matter. So therefore. It now, because of the changes that have happened since the C U P was part of this zone, makes it unsafe. Can you listen to that?
So let's put a pin in that question because that's gonna come up as we go forward, right? And it's a really good question. And hopefully as we kind of work through it, um, remind me when we get to the point where that, that issue comes up. Um, because it's a really good question, right? And it, it, the, the, the best answer I can give you right now is everyone's favorite lawyerly question, which is it depends. Okay, um, as far as what you just specifically said, typically, most of the time. If it's a, like a real, unless it's a super severe, like someone's gonna die kind of a safety concern. That one's probably gonna be let through as long as they've submitted a complete application, right? And so again, if, if you know of a scenario like that, conditions have changed and there are now safety concerns. I would say change your ordinance as soon as you can, right? Where someone brings in a vested application. Do you have some data?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to Mary's question. Um, what, what you were talking about was sort of two different scenarios in one question. I just wanted to clarify. So what Jordan was saying is the legislative decision would be whether you would allow a C U P for a particular use in a zone. So as you guys were looking at, um, builder visions and should we remove some things as conditional uses from the actual land use code? That's a legislative decision. What Jordan was talking about, someone comes with a C U P application that you're reviewing. That's where if someone comes and says, well, I think it's a safety hazard here. That's where, um, again, you can listen to that, but if, uh. The Utah Department of Transportation or our local, uh, streets supervisor or, uh, traffic study with, and all those things in the record say. There are no safety concerns. Um, that's in the, that's in the record. That's evidence from folks that that is their, their job. Um, so that's something that you would consider in that factual evidence that's in the record. It doesn't mean you can't listen to that person who has those concerns. But if there's overriding evidence in the record from experts that say otherwise, that's where you have to. Have to handle that.
Yeah, and, and we'll get into a little more nuances as well as we continue, right? Because for instance, you may be able to impose a condition, right? To mitigate the safety concerns, but it's, it's, there's gonna be very rare scenarios where you're gonna.
So you, okay, I. This, I'll, I'll, I'll ask one more question. It probably needs to be answered later, but, um, okay, with that in mind. Is there certain things that should always trigger for a county to reevaluate the conditional use permits? Cause sometimes can, those conditional use permits were put into the zone, you know, into the zoning. Quite a, quite an extensive period of time ago, time. And many things can happen between them, so. Is it?
So I'll.
Uh, okay, I apologize. I, I have a lot of questions.
So again, Mary, you're talking about the legislative decision and that's part of, you know, amending the land use code. So.
And, and can you bring up an interesting question, right?
Why should it be triggered?
It's really up to you, right? I, that's what we, in the private sector, we call a business decision, right? Where, uh, you know, as a commission, if you wanna say, hey, on a regular cadence, we want to revisit, uh, our permitted and conditional use lists in each zone, right? You can direct staff to do something like that, similar to like the general plans, right? You're supposed to review them every five to 10 years or so. I, I think it's actually pretty good practice, frankly, right? To regularly review your ordinances, your permitted use tables and your conditional use tables to make sure that they, uh, say what you want them to say.
But also just to speak to that, Mary, so if you're looking at the land use code as it stands and, uh. An application is before you for a use that says this is, this is allowed with a conditional use permit. If, um, if the commission is of the, is, is considering removing that as a conditional use permit from that zone. Um, and but there's an application before you, before that's.
Before that's done.
Um, it's what is, what does the land use code say now? Not that you know that you would maybe like that to remove that as a conditional use permit in the future. You can't consider that in your decision.
You have to stick with, with, I understand that.
And, and that's, I'll go ahead, Steve.
And, and Commissioner, you'll remember we had, when we had the C U P for Easy Street. That was one of the things that when we, when it was returned to us by the A L J. He indicated that you're, you're bound to the areas in which you've agreed that C U Ps can, can be, can exist. And then there's the presumption that if they can meet those conditions, once those conditions are met. Normally, we're going to defer to allow that C U P to exist. And so Commissioner Hedin and myself have brought up in the past about what the commission wants to consider and the former Commissioner Walker. About removing C U Ps from any of these areas because there is that change over time. It's been that presumption. Now, the commissioners, you can bring that up in the future and say, hey, we don't want C U Ps, but if you allow it in a particular zone. They're going to look and see what standards we've put in place to either, or to encourage allowing that because of the, the change in. I don't know how, how many years ago where they started, uh, the Supreme Court started pushing more C U P approvals, uh, and they've kind of shifted that goalpost.
As far as the, what's in the record.
The first, the presumption to grant the C U Ps.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But, cause I, I do think the public has the perception that we have a choi- more of a choice than we do.
Right, right. Which, yeah, and, and we could talk about how to kind of, uh, mitigate that perception, right? Um, one of the reasons, one of the big recommendations for having like your planning commission or just staff review C U Ps. Is because most of the time people are coming to the county commission or, and, and, and you guys are making the rules, right? So there are certain times where you're listening to them when, when, when they ask, hey, can we change the rules here, right? Um, but you're wearing a different hat and your discretion is a lot narrower when you're making administrative decisions. You can't consider those same things, but people still have that same expectation, right? And so sometimes taking administrative decision making away from the commission, uh, helps to kind of, uh, mitigate those expectations. Go ahead.
This, this actually was, I was just kind of making a list of questions, but since you just mentioned that, so Amy, you said. Those C U Ps are gonna become before the county commission in a couple of weeks, but I haven't seen them at the planning commission level.
So right now, I brought the code in case you want to see. Um, right now, uh, the land use authority for good conditional use permits is the county commission. So what, what Jordan was saying is a lot of jurisdictions have moved it out of the county commission and put it with the planning commission or with the zoning administrator. But right now, the way our code is set up, uh, you receive a recommendation from the zoning administrator. There are no public hearings. There is one public meeting, which I'll let Jordan explain probably better than me. There's one public meeting here at the county commission. And you make the decision on the C U P. So a public meeting is not the same as a public hearing, which I'll let Jordan explain, but that is the process currently in our code.
Have we not had C U Ps go through the planning commission before? I feel like we have.
Probably in the past it did. So in the past, I think as Stephen was speaking to, they were legislative decisions back in the day.
Far apart.
Yeah, back in the day. And so at that time, it would have gone to the planning commission for a public hearing and the county commission for a public hearing. But that's long gone. So, so the way our code reads is, uh, is reviewed at a staff level, staff provides a recommendation. You make the decision based on what Jordan's going through as far as what your, what your. Purview is, what your, your parameters are, like the conditions are and what conditions you might place on. But, and that would all be in the staff report. Staff might have recommended conditions if staff felt that. Uh, with these conditions, I feel they can comply with the criteria, right? Um, and, and the commission can add additional conditions, but if they're generally meeting that criteria or. Conditions can be placed to mitigate some of those effects, then you are to make a decision based on that factual evidence and based on criteria.
As a legislative body.
No, you were acting as a minister.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
I just wanna kind of review it, and if not, I'm gonna ask that this be added to the agenda, but. Is it part of our land use code revision to look at C U Ps? I think we had put that on that.
You wanted to.
Extents ever extensive list, okay.
You wanted to do just what Jordan was talking about, where periodically you look at your code and decide, you look at your use table, what should be permitted, what should be.
I just wanna make sure that that's on record, that we're gonna be doing that this year.
Um, so, but Jordan's got a lot to go through, so.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Stop whenever you want. Um. Okay, no, this is a really good discussion and, um. Yeah, so again, when we're talking about conditional use permits, right? So maybe we can review this slide just to, um, uh. Reiterate, right? Well, let's, let's agree with both. So administrative decisions, conditional use permits, right? Um, when, when you're, to make, make sure your decision, decision is legal. You have to apply the plain language of the land use regulation to a land use application, right? So if there's a requirement that a building is a certain height or need a certain setback and that's in your ordinance. Then, you know, the, the rules go both ways. You are bound by that, the output is bound by that, right? And so if they bring in an application that shows a taller height or a different setback, um, then, then you have, then they, they need to change that, right? And you can't approve that, for instance. Um, so that's the illegal part, right? And then as far as the substantial evidence part, right? So if you have to draw inferences or conclusions from a set of facts, or when the regulation gives discretion. And we'll talk more about kind of what this means in practice, right? Um, to make decisions subject, subject to applicable standards or criteria, then you have to support your decision with substantial evidence. So substantial evidence is, is not someone saying, I don't think this is the right place, or I think it's gonna have a negative effect on our community. Or I think there's gonna be too much traffic, right? Those are, those are, uh, that largely, if that's all you're gonna go off with, is someone making that statement. That would be from a legal standpoint, considered speculation or conjecture, right? Now, all those things might be true. You just have to make sure you have evidence to support the statement, right? So evidence has to have a factual basis, has to be credible, has to be relevant. Um, and, and I would add, it has to be expert in some cases, right? So if you think it's gonna have a negative impact on traffic, you should probably be getting a traffic study to support the conclusion that we're gonna require certain traffic mitigations. Um, and then substantial evidence is, is evidence that a reasonable bond would accept is adequate to support a conclusion. Um, so these principles apply to all administrative decision making, and I don't know if you guys review like commercial site plans. Okay, so is, is our conditional use permits the only thing that they're doing from an administrative standpoint?
Uh, they also, uh, make the final decision on the final plans for subdivisions.
Which will need to be amended. But, okay.
It's amended for the new, the new, uh, for residential.
Right, for residential.
For commercial, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's fair. All right, thank you for that clarification. Okay, um, so yeah, whenever you're, so, so conditional use permits and then subdivisions, uh, things like that. Um, at that point, you're not considering what do we think is best for the community? You're just making kind of a technical analysis, right? Of whether or not they comply with the code. Uh, and whether or not there are reasonable conditions you to oppose. So let, let's get a little more into that, right? Oh, then, and then here, here's a slide on considerations to keep in mind when, uh, listening to the public. So to, to kind of follow what Amy was saying, as far as state law is concerned with administrative decisions. Um, there is no requirement that you hold a public hearing, and a public hearing is when the public has a right to speak, right? So you have to let them come and share their opinion. There's no requirement with administrative decisions that you have a public hearing. If, if, since you, as the, as the, uh, land use authority, since you are a public body, all your decisions have to be made in a, in a, in a, in a public. Meeting, right? Where they can come and watch and, and participate. If you were to designate, but state law also allows you to designate a single individual as your land use authority, like a zoning administrator or a planner or something like that, right? And in those cases, you wouldn't even need a public meeting to make that decision, right? Uh. Uh, but your local code can require more than that, right? So if your local code requires public meetings and public hearings for conditional use permits, then you have to follow that. But recognize you guys are the ones who hold that, that, the ball is in your court to decide if you wanna have public hearings and public meetings. Uh, for.
But that would have to be in the code.
It has to, right, yes. You could put that into your code, right? And then you call. Um. Okay. So now getting into the specifics of a, so with that kind of background and, and basis, right? Any questions on administrative decision making generally? Before we get into kind of the specifics of C U Ps. Um, so what is a conditional use? We talk about conditional or permitted uses and conditional uses. Permitted uses are also referred to as by right uses. Um, so like in your residential zone, I'm guessing that single family residences are permitted use, right? So if someone brings in a permit and it complies with all the requirements, they are entitled to approval of their application and you're done, right? No more questions, no more analysis. You just approve it, right? Um. But there's also a recognition, there are certain types of uses, and I'll just read this, that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on the municipality surrounding neighbors. Or adjacent land uses may require reasonable conditions to mitigate the use detrimental effects and to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses. So there are certain scenarios. Here's kind of a, a short list of, by the way, I put that in there. That is one of the most beautiful landfills I've ever seen. Isn't that just? Um, I thought that was a great picture. Um, but, but the courts sometimes refer to conditional use permissive, additional uses as special uses. I think the most descriptive, descriptive is unusual uses. Um, so there are uses that your community needs and even wants, uh, but there's a recognition that. They have unique characteristics that don't always fit everywhere, right? So airports, uh, religious uses, recreational facilities, I know a big one right now, a lot of community, communities of that one is, is pickleball courts, right? They can be kind of loud, right? Hopefully I didn't hit any careful words with that.
To the pickleball.
Barrel Kitchen. But they're one of those uses that people probably want by their homes, but not right by their home, right? Uh, gas stations, landfills, gun clubs, junkyards, kennels, gravel pits, and there's more, right? But, but this is kind of a representative sample of the types of uses that it's probably appropriate, appropriate to designate as conditional uses. Because they're, you, you know, you need them in your community and you want them in your community, um, but you recognize that they might have some. Unique and unusual characteristics that don't necessarily fit anywhere and everywhere all the time. Uh, okay. Okay, so. Whereas with the permitted use, you just look at the requirements and any, you know, uh. Any any of the requirements that are imposed in the code, make sure they comply and hit the the and check the box. There are some additional consideration with considerations with conditional uses. So. This language comes from state code. It says a county. May adopt a land use ordinance that includes conditional uses and provisions for. They require compliance with objective standards set forth forth in an applicable ordinance. Um, so an additional thing that you can do with additional uses. Uh, is you can require clients with these objective standards, right? Um, and and I, this question comes up. I think it's helpful to talk about. If if this is boring to you, you can you can check out for a second, but. Um, the general difference between a rule and a standard, right? So a rule, the consequences are triggered once we know the facts. I used this example before, right? But structures shall be no more than thirty five feet high. That's a rule or a requirement, right? Once you know the fact of how tall the building is, you can decide whether or not they break the rule. They they follow the rule or they break the rule, right? You don't have to really think about anything else. A standard. Requires additional analysis of and a judgment about the facts. And usually from a standard, you're going to impose a requirement, right? Or a rule. But the sta- so like a standard, the use will not have an adverse uh such as say effect. On street service levels and or traffic patterns. So you you need some more information, right? To determine whether or not that's the case. And then once you determine that there is an adverse effect. Then you're gonna have to decide, you're gonna have to make a judgment about what kind of requirement you're gonna impose, right? But. You need to have standards in your ordinance that you can look to. To decide whether or not you can impose a condition on a conditional use permit. So here's, go ahead.
Just repeat just that last sentence.
So. There ha- well, and I'll get into it a little further, but there has to be standards in your ordinance. That govern, that that kind of give um parameters. That you can point to. When you're imposing conditions on a conditional use permit.
So in the code right now, sorry, Stephen. You have conditional use criteria and it lists um A through. And that's what you would be looking at. So A is effects on environment, and there's a description for that. B is compatible with the surrounding area, there's a description. Uh, C is external impacts minimize. D is infrastructure impacts minimize. E is consistent with the land use code and general plan. And F is parcel size. So the and it gives a description as to what you're supposed to consider for those. Uh, criteria. So that's what that's what Jordan is just talking about.
So Commissioner McGinn, one one example was when we were talking about the CUP for the uh the wastewater improvement.
Yeah.
Item that was before the commission, we could only apply standards or rules on that CUP. Or requirements on that CUP that already existed under our system. So we couldn't go out and say for this wastewater treatment plant, we also want. And insert, you know, random criteria that doesn't have any correlation to that wastewater treatment facility. And that's that that um you, there's a really good analysis on that. On Craig Call's uh opinion on that particular CUP about what we can apply and what we can't apply. And then he went into our items A through F, and he had some critiques of one of the items being. Uh, potentially even redundant, but there's a good analysis in there on on that Craig uh. Uh, call decision about standards as well, so just for more reading on it.
And then, you know, even looking here at nine ten six, right? You can find more standards, right? So. Uh, so in the middle. The county may impose such development standards and safeguards as the conditions. And location indicated port to the welfare protection of adjacent properties. Um, the neighborhood in the county from noise, vibration, dust, dirt, smoke, fumes, gas, odor, explosion, glare, traffic. Circulation or other undesirable hazards conditions, right? Those are all standards that you can look to. Um, and point to to say, hey. This particular use has an issue with these kinds of things, so we need to figure out whether or not. There are detrimental effects. And whether or not we should be imposing conditions. Is that making sense? And and so these are a few uh some examples. I think I pulled these from Harriman City. Uh, so types of standards, right? So impacts of street service levels or traffic patterns, impacts on adequacy of utility systems and service delivery. Impacts of connectivity and pedestrian bicycle safety. And so you see, it's not imposing specific requirements. But it is saying you can consider these things and whether or not the use is gonna have an impact on these types of things. When you're considering your conditions. So let's talk about conditions. Oh, yeah, which is one more note on your standards, right? Um, they can't be so general as to allow unchecked discretion by the decision maker. So. If it's too general. Then the decision making becomes arbitrary and egregious, because you can really just impose whatever you want, right? So the courts have looked at uh at a statement like it can't adversely affect the public interest, right? That's a really. Broad and subjective statement. What what is the public interest entail, right? Um, whereas an obje- objective standard is. You know, well, like we talked about, will not adversely affect street service levels and traffic patterns. So it's saying. Part of the public interest is making sure that we have good street service levels and traffic patterns, right? Um, and that gives some. Guidance to the decision maker. And you won't get in trouble with the course of 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 making arbitrary decision making, right? So again, as you're reviewing your codes, it's useful to kind of look through your language and say, hey, is this too broad? Is this too general? Does this give us too much discretion to the point that we really don't have any guardrails about what we're deciding on, right? Okay, and so the next part of the code, a land use authority shall approve a conditional use. Okay, so this is the. Like Stephen talked about, the presumption of conditional uses, right? That they're going to be approved, right? And you shall approve them if uh if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed. To mitigate, now, don't blaze over here, to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. In accordance with applicable standards. So we've talked about your standards, right? You have to have those in place. And then in looking to and connecting to those standards. If you can identify in a proposed use reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. Um, then you can. Of impose conditions to mitigate those effects, right? So with the note at the bottom, this is language from the code. The requirement to reasonably mitigate detrimental effects does not require elimination of the detrimental effects, right? So let's say that this is gonna cause a lighting issue, right? You can't simply say, well, there's no way we can get rid of all the lighting, so we can deny it, right? What you can do is you can impose a reasonable condition to mitigate the lighting issues, right? Grand County is pretty, you gotta, you have some um night sky requirements, don't you, right? And so looking to those, right? That could be helpful to guide your discretion, right? But usually, if if you can't totally get rid of whatever anticipated detrimental effect of the proposed use. That's not a basis to deny, right? As long as you can impose a condition or the applicant is proposing a condition. That reasonably mitigates the detrimental effects you've identified. Um, then you shall approve that use, right? You're entitled to approval of that use. Um, so as far, there's kind of a two-step decision making process, as I see it, right? So first, you're identifying the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in light of the code's standards. And based on the evidence available, right? So. Um, you're looking at what they're proposing, you're asking questions about its characteristics. You know, maybe uh the the public has information about what characteristics of the use to be. Consider that, right? If it's if it's ba- has a basis in fact and things like that. Um, you're looking at at traffic studies, engineering studies, other expert studies, right? That will inform your your decision making. Um, and then. If if from those. Characteristics, you you can find that it's gonna have detrimental effects, right? So whether the then then you can impose. The second way, one is formulate reasonable conditions to mitigate those detrimental effects in accordance with the standards that you have in place.
Reasonable mitigate. Uh, you know, that's also adding kind of a flexibility. Cause reasonable for one person might not be reasonable for another.
Right.
So that's where it can get a little dicey.
It can. You're right. And that's where it's why it's so important to make sure your decision is supported by evidence, right? Um, when we talk about substantial evidence, so there's there's varying levels of evidentiary standard, right? Um, uh. Some are like clear and convincing beyond a reasonable doubt. You need a lot of evidence. The weight of the evidence has to support the conclusion, right? Almost all the evidence has to say, yeah, this is the only choice. Substantial evidence isn't that, like, you could have. You could have two engineering reports, for instance, right? The one might say. Yeah, this really isn't gonna have a negative impact on traffic, and the other is gonna say, yeah, it is gonna have a negative impact. Right? And those scenarios you can pick, right? As long as you have some good, relevant, credible, expert evidence to support your conclusion. Then of course, you're probably gonna look at that and say, yeah, that's supported by sub- substantial evidence. That meets the reasonable standard in this case, right? Um, but in my experience, yeah, when you when you kind of get into debates, into debates over reasonableness. Often they'll dig a little deeper into what the evidence was that supported the conclusion. And if your evidence is, like we talked about earlier, sufficient to convince a reasonable mind to support a conclusion. And again, from a legal standpoint, you're probably gonna be in a good place. Um, but you're right, uh, the the reasonableness question. Um, is something that you kind of have to work through sometimes. Any other questions about that? Uh, so again, I just put those up, uh, for examples of certain um types of detrimental. Effects that you could identify. Um, again, if you think that there might be a negative impact on traffic. Get some evidence to to give you some guidance about what kind of a condition to impose, like a traffic study or something like that, right? Um, if there's gonna be an impact on your water or your sewer or your storm drain service. Make sure you're getting engineering opinions, right? Or um getting your public works involved, uh, having the the applicant bring in some studies to show kind of. Uh, what the impact is and and what the best way to address those impacts are. And then based upon those studies. You could potentially impose additional conditions, right? Um, to help mitigate those issues, so. Um, and then I'll add one more step, a third step. Uh, this goes back to uh the conversation I have with my sixteen year old every time he's doing his math. Show your work, right? You have to show your work. Um, so state any proposed or imposed conditions in the record. Support the conditions with factual findings, evidence, and leave a conclusion, so the basis for the decision. So these statements I have here, they come from. Uh, a case, uh, it was a Utah Supreme Court case from twenty seventeen called. McAlhenny versus Moab City. Right? Do you remember this one? So. Uh, it's it's a, is it is it still operating? Is the McAlhenny home still a bed and breakfast? Do we know? I know it's just right down the street.
It's right up there. I it's, I don't know if it's still being used. It's been sold.
Okay.
Somebody, I'm sorry, it's been sold, so I'm not sure if they sold it and it continued to be used as a bed and breakfast or if it's. Just a home.
So the whole issue with the McAlhenny case was that um they wanted to do a bed and breakfast and the the city denied it. And they really didn't give their reasons for why. Very clearly, right? And so the court looked at that and said, hey. This isn't supported by substantial evidence. You need to go back and and go through that process. So some of the statements, the decision maker must provide reasons. When they make administrative decisions, uh, they must disclose the steps by which it reaches the ultimate factual conclusions. Substantial evidence review requires that the uh the grounds upon which the administrative agency act to be clearly disclosed. Must make findings of fact and conclusions of law that are adequately detailed. Uh, the failure of the agency to make adequate findings of fact and material issues renders its findings. Arbitrary and egregious. That's what you always wanna stay away from, right? Is is arbitrary and egregious decision making. And so in this, right, building the record, uh, providing your evidence and and stating your facts and your conclusions. Um, the recommendation here is always lean heavily on your staff, right? Your attorney, your redevelopment directors, planners. Um, they can in their staff reports and elsewhere help you to really make sure you build a record that shows how you made your decisions. And 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 confirms that it was made uh based upon what the law says. And based upon uh substantial evidence to support any issues we posed.
When we're talking about the record, is that mainly like the approving ordinance behind the CUP or the minutes or?
So, yeah, usually there's like the minutes, um, there's your staff report. Often, you guys do a record of decision. It's really helpful practice to have exhibits, yep. What else would you add, Amy?
There there are site plans, there's architectural regulations, like all those things that go in that. That all include the back. So and then, yes, once a decision is made and ends that.
Any graphic or engineering reports that you've done, studies, right? You wanna make sure you include those in in the record, right? Um, it the the record is whatever you you put into your final decision, right? Support the decision that you made, right?
So oftentimes when you'll see a staff report. You want to see are there exhibits attached to that staff? And and there should be for in a lot of cases. So you'll see exhibit A, tracks that. Exhibit B. Site plans submitted by the app. Right? So you'll see a list of exhibits. Those are all part of the record.
Yeah, good questions. Um, okay, so a comment on denying, right? Um, this is what the code says. If the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of a proposed conditional use. Cannot be substantially mitigated by the proposal or the imposition, by the proposal or the imposition of reasonable conditions. To achieve compliance with applicable standards. The land use authority may deny a conditional use. Um, so the best practice here is. You should really never see this in your lifetime, that you would have a scenario where. You can't find con- conditions that you can impose to mitigate detrimental effects. Um, up until just a few years ago, twenty twenty. Uh, we could say that courts had never upheld the denial of a CUP, a conditional use permit. Now we have one case. There is one case where it wasn't the Utah Supreme Court, it was one of the Court of Appeals. Upheld the decision involving Springdale, the town of Springdale. Um, and it was a commercial parking lot. That was gonna have a lot of parking and it was gonna. Accommodate some of the shuttles to go into Zion's. And it was right, so. It was, I think the zone was Village Residential or something like that. And this Village Residential. In its conditional use permit list had parking lots. I'm guessing it doesn't anymore. What it did at the time. And someone who owned a a three acre lot with a home on it. Said, hey, business opportunity, right? Good for them. Um, we wanna do a parking lot here. And uh, I think to this, the some, like, I think there was a uh. It was surrounded by different zones. So I think on one side it's some commercial. And then south was like agricultural, but over here, there were six residences. That came right up next to this parking lot, twenty feet away. And spring, the town of Springdale went through a big process and ultimately determined, hey. There's no way we can impose conditions to mitigate the detrimental effects of this parking. And so they denied it. Um, and the and the Utah Court of Appeals upheld that decision. There was a dissenting opinion. That felt like that shouldn't have been the outcome, right? So even there, it wasn't unanimous. And and admittedly, within the land use industry, kind of the general opinion is. We probably shouldn't rely on that case too much, because we don't know what the Supreme Court would say. But they have been very clear and make it to say that. If you can impose reasonable conditions to mitigate the detrimental effects. Um, then you should approve the 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 permit, right? But this was one case where because of the condition, and and you can imagine, right, what type of a commercial lot that the parking lot was probably was going to be. Um, but now that's the one case we have in Utah to look to where a conditional use permit denial. So in most cases, you probably wanna stay away from that, and if you do wanna deny. My recommendation is make sure you consult your attorney. As far as what the risks you're exposed to yourself. Any questions about that?
Not about that specifically. I just have kind of a couple of random ones.
Yeah.
So. You mentioned, I think, I think I heard this correct, that you said, in theory, if we had it in. Within our code, we could have a public hearing.
If if if, so if your if your local code says, for conditional use permits, you should have a public hearing, then you must have a public.
Okay, okay.
But what I'm saying is state code doesn't require.
I understand. I understand, okay. Um, I just, yeah. And then just, I I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanna make sure that everybody understands this. That a CUP follows the parcel.
That's correct, yeah. So you don't make decisions based upon the individual applying.
Right.
You make decisions based upon the use being conducted.
Right, so that's, I think it's really important to to understand that, because for example, easy streets CUP. You know, it is um. You know, it is, um, it's a, it's a bike company, um, tour company. But the reality is, we basically, I view it as a rezone. You know, but that, I mean, you know, just to, to, you know.
Yeah.
And so because of our, you know, so someday that bike company might sell and then who knows what it's going to be. And understandably, those conditions are in place and I, and I understand all that, but I think there was some misunderstanding that. That people thought, okay, it's applied to this, in this case, that user, and then, then it would go away. And that's not the case.
Yeah, what we, the, the language you use is that the conditional use permit runs with the law.
Right. And so, and so in theory, it, it really gives that landowner, to me, I mean, it really elevates the, you know, the. The, why my brain just.
Value.
Like the value thing to make so much of that property, right?
And just to clarify something, you said, Trish, um, you said. That owner sells, another person buys it, who knows what that would be.
Well, and, no, I, I, and I, and I kept going and I, and I said, I understand they have to follow the conditions, I, you know. But just, just, just so people know that, you know, they're, they're being given a lot of.
And again, um, back to if your code allows a CUP in that zone.
I know.
And then it's up to the decision maker to put reasonable conditions on that approval. To help mitigate those impacts of the neighborhood.
Right. So, and, and so, you know, I do think we are going to be looking, um, at our land use table and CUPs. And, and you know, one thing that was brought up, and I think it was Tony that brought it up, was weird outliers. Right? Like, we've got, you know, this land use table and it's, it's, you know, permitted, permitted. And all of a sudden, you know, there's just a weird outlier. It's like, how did it get there?
Yeah.
And so obviously at some point along the line. Somebody had something that wanted done. And, and so I think when we're, we're going hopefully through that process, we're going to be looking for those strange outliers. Um, because I, yeah.
Jordan, would, would it be possible to run through, and, and you've got five commissioners that have had. Quite a bit of, um, training on CUPs and Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless are newer this year. Um, could you run through the kind of the annual renewal, renewal requirement and how one loses a CUP?
Okay.
Just, just the, the quick, quick version of it.
Yeah, so, uh, state law doesn't say anything about annual renewals, right? But a lot of codes will have provisions, say, a, a, a holder of a conditional.
And, and we do.
You have something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you come in and have it reviewed, right? Um, one thing to keep in mind is that is not an additional bite at the apple, right? So as long as they are operating within the parameters of their approved conditional use permit. That's really the only, should be the only purpose of those reviews, is to have them come in and say, okay. What are the conditions? Have there been any complaints? Have there been any concerns, right? And if there have been complaints or concerns of, of, that there's been violations of the conditions. Then again, you want to make sure you give due process, right? So you give them an opportunity to correct it, to resolve the issues. Um, but if there's repeated violations, then there may be a scenario where you could revoke, right? Um, but that's after a few times, at least, right, of making sure that they have the opportunity to, to correct and resolve the issues.
Right.
Right? Um.
Yeah, that's.
And, and really you can do that at any point, right? Like, if you start getting a lot of complaints on a conditional use, then you can bring them in. And that's what some communities do. They don't have an annual review, but they just wait till complaints come in, if complaints come in. And then they handle them on a case by case basis, right? Um, but make sure you don't use your annual review as an opportunity to say, yeah, you know what, you've been doing this long enough, I think. Because again, it runs with the land as long as they're, they can, they can apply with all the requirements.
And I know we're quickly running out of time here, so whatever you've got left, I'd like.
This is the last slide.
As a body has any questions, I think we've got all of your contact information here. We can follow up, but I'd like to hear. What the final letter.
And, and maybe I'll make one more comment about the running with the land you brought up. So that, that's a really good reason. I, there are certain communities, and, and again, this should, sometimes it happens where. We'll, we'll get an advisory opinion request, for instance, right? And it'll be about a conditional use permit. So we say, okay, what are the conditions that were imposed? And everyone has kind of a different opinion, right? Because there's the minutes and someone said this, someone said that, right? So again, make sure your conditions are, are distilled and articulated into some sort of a record decision, a decision or something like that. Number one, so everyone's on the same page. And number two, so that if a new owner happens to come in. You have a document that you can give to them and say, hey, these are all the conditions that apply to you and there isn't any debate or disagreement about that.
Show your work.
Yep, show your work. Exactly. Yeah, anyway, any more questions?
Yeah, can you, uh, just make sure that your slides are available to us?
Yep, I'll send it to Amy.
Thanks.
And this is a reminder, there's the other, uh, study workshop session on February twenty fourth. And that'll be more of a planning one-on-one, so it will cover a lot of things that you will see. Uh, that'll be at the planning commission at, uh, four thirty. Well, yeah, I think we haven't, we'll, we'll send you the agenda. But it should be at the beginning of that.
Thank you. You get a five minute break, guys.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for your time. We really appreciate it. And Amy, thanks for putting this together.
February fourth, twenty fourth, you said, Monday, it's four thirty. Oh, good, I have nothing on that day yet. Four thirty?
All right, so we'll take a recess until four o'clock and reconvene with the Board of Equalization. Thanks, y'all. Okay, I will open this BOE meeting. Uh, let's see, it's four P M, uh.
That's right, I know about that.
February. And present are Commissioner Hadeen, Commissioner Hadler, Commissioner McCurdy, Commissioner McGann, Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner McCandless. As well as myself, Commissioner Windmill. And I believe this is turned over to. Oh, okay. And this is the, the Board of Equalization, yes. Okay, maybe I wasn't looking at that. So we have the minutes on that?
It's right here.
Okay, perfect. Do I have something to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented in the packet. For December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second, yeah. Perfect motion by Commissioner McGann and seconded by Commissioner Hadler, all in favor. I, that passes unanimously, thank you. Going to consideration to accept late property valuation appeal for parcel zero nine dash zero 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 dash zero three nine nine.
All right. Take it away here. Um, so this property owner approached, uh, me in my office, um, regarding the valuation that they received on their, uh, property. This is a Castle Valley property. Um, and they explained to me that they had some extenuated, extenuated circumstances that, uh, prevented them from submitting an appeal during the, the typical appeal period. Um, and I let them know that I would, um, you know, see what the, you know, what the rules and guidance was regarding, uh, the potential to, to see that I, that, see that appeal. Um, because I was aware that there are certain circumstances where it would be permissible. Um, I reached out to a specialist with the Tax Commission. And they, they did recommend, um, opening the BOE back up and allowing this property owner to, um, give their reasoning. Um, and, and, in the agenda packet is the rule, the Utah Administrative Code rule that, um. Um, speaks to the, the, the authority of the Board of Equalization to accept a late appeal in the, in a circum, in a given circumstance. Um, and I do believe Mrs. Doherty, the property owner, is, is, um, here present virtually. Um, they, they did provide a narrative in their appeal document that's in the, the, the next action item. Um, it's not in this agenda summary, but I, I thought perhaps, um. That the property owner would be willing to speak to, um, the, the consideration by this board of, uh, to accept the late appeal. So Terry, if you want to go ahead, you're muted.
Yeah, unmute your microphone. Not quite yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, it's just like the commercial. Um. Thank you so much for your willingness to consider my late appeal. It's been a rough year and I was a little distracted. With a divorce, a thirty year marriage ending and having to move out and relocate. And I look at my tax bills and everything has gone up. Colorado went up as well. But this was such a huge jump. And it's a huge hit. And I'm in a different circumstance. With not nearly as much financial resources I used to have. And I would really appreciate it if you would consider, you know, adding it in with the other, um, Castle Valley. People that I think have also had a little bit of a sticker shock.
Um, and, and I don't have in front of me, this is Stephen Stogs, the county attorney. Uh, commissioners on the rule packet, if you go up four pages from the bottom, there's highlighted section, that's, uh, the ability for the Board of Equalization. Um, Clerk Auditor Wojtek did provide that, which was excellent. Um, perhaps if the applicant could explain the circumstances, I know. If the circumstances, if, I, I know most folks are saying that high valuations, but if you could explain to the commission a little bit more. Background about the inability to apply, if it's just the divorce or if it's the sticker price of it.
Um, no, it was, I had to move out of a place that was off the grid and move everything down to the, a place in Fruta. And it was just a very hectic year. And I, I'm sure I got the notification taxes were going up. As I did get the notification taxes were going up in Fruta. And I usually compare, I take the time and I look and go, okay, this is how much it went up. And I didn't. I'll be honest, I was gone most of the summer trying to move everything. And I'm just like, well, I always pay my taxes on time, everything's going up. When I saw how much it went up, I, I definitely would have appealed. I mean, I didn't do the ones in Fruta. Because they only went up like, I don't know, two percent or three percent. And Colorado is just booming and everything is mushrooming and. But it was nothing like a hu, over a hundred percent increase in valuation. And it's, it's a vacant land. I've done nothing on it for fifty years, forty years. I mean, probably the well went in maybe forty years ago and I have allowed. The town of Castle Valley to use my property to monitor water. You know, John Groove, they go into my property all the time. The last improvement I did was put in a very rough. Just a bulldozed road so that they could get to the well to do the testing. And I had the well pumped, but there's no improvements on this property. And I'm paying more for that property than I am like an eighteen hundred square foot home in Fruta with.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted, just to follow up on what the attorney was saying, really what this, uh, current action item we're on is just considering. Accepting your late appeal and the circumstances surrounding why you were unable to submit an appeal timely. And so we just want to speak to the logistics, um, of what prevented you from doing so. And it sounds like you, you gave a, you know, a, a description of that, as it seems.
Okay. I, I was pretty stressed. It's been a rough year. It's getting better.
The way I understand it, Clerk Auditor, you can correct me, one, they would have to reopen it and then number two, they make the decision on it if they felt that the circumstances are.
Um, so the, uh, uh, agenda item number two is just to. Approval to consider the appeal and then we move to agenda three to.
And if we, if we don't want to consider the appeal, then we wouldn't have an agenda item three, is that right? Correct, correct. And, and just noting, um, and as always, I'm. I am always trying to be the best rule follower and stricter for this. If we look at the highlighted paragraphs on four pages up from the bottom in the R eight eight four. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on exhibit, not exhibit.
R eighty-eight four.
I'm on item number two.
Yep.
Second attachment.
Got it.
Four pages up from the bottom to the highlighted section. Um, really the most important part, subsection E of item twelve, it says the property. Really the most important part, subsection E of item twelve, it says, "The property owner was unable to file an appeal within the appeal period because of extraordinary and unanticipated circumstances that occurred during or within a reasonable time before the appeal period and no co-owner of the property was capable of filing the appeal." I would encourage the commission to consider words extraordinary and unanticipated circumstances. These are usually high bars that we set when we use words that are intentional like that. I am often the same person that encourages the commission to deny these. I understand life circumstances exist, but I, I don't know that this qualifies for an extraordinary or unanticipated circumstance that would merit reopening and considering this item. But as always, it's for the Board of Equalization to consider these items and remember when we do make concessions, those, those that follow may, may have the similar circumstances and so we limit ourselves based on decisions going forward. So that's my, my two cents.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Are we hoping that slippery slope up to? I mean, anyone who would be looking to do this?
Again, you're looking at the circumstances presented before you. There's circumstances from, you know, kind of the best argument from the applicant would be there was a lot of stressful times, I was going through a divorce, I was moving, those are the circumstances. Now if you have somebody else come back, we're gonna look, you know, if court reviews this, is this an arbitrary, arbitrary and capricious decision that you guys make in one circumstance or another, what happens if somebody in a similar circumstance comes back and said, same things, I was moving, I was getting divorced and I was looking at a different property in a different location. I mean, those are, those are the things, so. I, yeah.
If, if we do decide to look at this and open up, uh, agenda item three and then we deny an agenda item three, does that give her recourse to appeal to the state?
If you, if you reconsider it, you're gonna open it up for a possibility for an appeal from that.
But if, if we don't, then then she wouldn't have the recourse to go back to the state, like, like, like the other folks, just for example, in Castle Valley who appealed last time. We didn't, if I remember correctly, we didn't go with their appeal and then they had to further appeal to the next level up. So this, so if we chose to hear her and chose to go to item three and then in item three, we, we said, "It looks like there's not enough evidence to convince us" or whatever, or we don't feel like we want to do that, then she still has recourse to kick it up to the next level. But if we don't, then she wouldn't, is that correct?
Okay. Uh, well, the, the, you know, denying it would, would mean you would approve or you, you would rule on a new evaluation based on the evidence presented. Um, you know, my recommendation is to follow that, that roadmap as you just described it. Um, there are fourteen other Castle Valley parcels that submitted a TC one ninety-four to the State Tax Commission to have a hearing before the State Tax Commission. And so the idea, you know, of course you all will decide how you, how you make. But my recommendation would be to, you know, you know, for this applicant and allow them to join that pool of other Castle Valley residents to see that.
And we wouldn't be able to do that if we voted no on number. Okay, that's, that's all I want you to know. I thought that was the case.
So.
Uh, Stephen, I have a question. On her, um, little letter here, she writes, "I feel that a life-changing, changing experience as recognized by social security such as a divorce warrants the right to file a light appeal." In, in your opinion, would that, would that, would that rise to the level of extraordinary circumstances or is that, is that light of that?
Again, from my, so in my private practice, I've done many, many divorces, divorces have a long duration. So I think of an individual going through a standard divorce, probably not, if there were other factors that were egregious in nature or more specific. I think that there are certain forces that could qualify for this. But with the information that I have now, again, we look at extraordinary and unanticipated circumstances. I, that's how you, that's normally a very high bar to meet. And so I, I, that's, that's why my question to the applicant was what focusing on that element of it, you know, what, what's the most important part? And so what I, what I did hear is, you, you know, whether she misspoke and went into an analysis about applying for Colorado versus here versus not versus, I mean, those are other things that I would look to, but I, I don't know that this is sufficient. I do think, I would say divorce is an exceptionally stressful event for many, many people and it's, uh, turns people's lives upside down. Whether it qualifies or not, that's a decision that you guys make.
Trish.
I'm gonna make a motion. I move to approve consideration of the late appeal for parcel number zero nine dash zero 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 dash zero three nine nine.
Motion by Commissioner Dean, seconded by Commissioner Hadler. Further discussion?
I think there's, I, I, I think there are circumstances, I've personally been through divorce and it was not entirely pleasant. And it, true, it, like Stephen said, it can, it can throw you for a crazy loop and, and everyone's circumstances affect themselves in a different way and I don't want to be one to judge this particular case. And I think if the applicant felt like it was an extreme stressor on her, then I, I, I'm inclined to move it to the next level.
Anyone else?
And then, then we can deny the next level and, and, but then she has the right to go to the state. Okay, that's what we.
Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? All right, passes unanimously. We are on to agenda item number three, consideration of property valuation.
And, um, so as outlined in code, because this is technically a BOE appeal hearing, the assessor is here, present Assessor Swayze as well as the appellant. I'm not suggesting that there needs to be a presentation of evidence. You, you know, you all may request that. It may not be necessary in this case. But the, the parties involved are here, the evidence was included in the agenda packet for your review and, and shared with the assessor as well as the appellant. And so, you know, where we're at now is, as has been discussed here, a denial of the, of the assessor's valuation would allow the property owner to forward their appeal to the State Tax Commission.
Uh, I'll move to deny the property valuation appeal for parcel zero nine dash zero 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 dash zero three nine nine.
Motion to deny? By Commissioner Hadler and seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Any other discussion?
Sure. Yeah, I think we've, uh, I mean, we've, we've definitely looked at some of these in the past couple of years from both the commercial in the city of Maua last year and in Castle Valley. And we've had plenty of discussions in the commission as to our capacity for drilling down and looking at the individual circumstances per one. So going along with that, I don't feel comfortable diving into this one either. And I, I think it would be appropriate for her to, to take it to the next level.
I would support that as well. I have a feeling. So anybody else? Um, and no discussion. All right, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. It is denied and you are free to go to the state now.
So let me understand correctly, I explained to the state, I took it to the local level and was denied?
Yeah, and I, I'll work with you, Terry, on that. I'll, I'll walk you through that process and help you get that to the state, okay? No, and because I'll be filed with my office and I've done a bunch of them, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. Thank you. Bye.
And is there anything further on this Board of Equalization?
Oh shit, I have to turn it off.
I will adjourn this and move into our regular session. Correct?
Yep.
Time being four seventeen approximately, same commissioners present as were here earlier and we will all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're a little bit late for our four o'clock citizens to be heard, but I will open at this time to citizens to be heard. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak? And how about online? All right, again, the chamber, anybody, no takers? All right, we will move on then. So we will move on. Do we have any presentations today? None. Department reports, none as well, none of these, okay. All right, move on to commission disclosures then. Anybody, Brian?
Yeah, I just want to disclose on item number six, there's a taco familiarization tour with GoPro. And I have a, a contract already set up or, and providing services with NapTech expeditions for that. So I will recuse myself from the vote on that, but I'd like to still participate in the discussion because I do have a lot of information to bring on familiarization trips.
Anybody else? Michael?
I don't see any items, but as always, my wife works for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, sounds good. Then we will move on to our elected officials' reports. Oh, wait a minute here, I'm sorry, I just missed the general commission reports and future considerations. So do we want to start? Commissioner Hadeen, please.
Okay, um, I'll go really quickly. On the twenty-third, I went via Zoom to a UAC legislative session. As you guys know, those are fast and furious, so won't go into that, it's a lot. Um, on the twenty-seventh, we had a planning commission meeting. We did elect a chair, Tony Mancuso, that was a unanimous decision. And Mary Hoffine was elected as the vice chair. We did talk about goals and objectives for the two thousand twenty-five land use code revision. And there was a public meeting, not a hearing for, um, there was, they were the first subdivision under this new legislation and I thought it was really productive. I thought it was just a great discussion. They, we, Amy kind of went through the subdivision, the nuances of it, and then the commissioners just kind of gave their input and, and I thought it was great. And I think it's a great way for the general public to know what's out there and what's coming. And, and I think they actually, this, the developer got a couple tips that are, that are probably going to work well for his subdivision. So I think that was really, went really well. On the twenty-eighth, I had a very quick housing subcommittee meeting with Brian and Mike and we'll have, we're gonna have a larger meeting tomorrow, so much more to come. Um, let's see, oh, one thing that was, well, anyways, I won't go over that. Lastly, I just want to make a statement. Um, I've had grave concerns regarding some state, but predominantly federal legislative and executive actions to date. These actions seek to jeopardize the jurisdiction of our public lands, jeopardize the integrity of our public lands, a major driver of our economy, threaten our land management agencies and their employees, threaten immigrants of this community that are the backbone of our hospitality industry, endanger our essential air service, a, a driver of our tourism economy. And lastly, metal was placing tariffs on our trade partners, placing undue burdens on the average American and thus once again threatening our livelihood. I encourage each and every one of us as the legislative body, but also as are the citizens of this community that seek to have a strong economy and a quality of life here in Grand County to weigh further into the miscommunication that is being sent out and hopefully stand up to our representatives to make sure that these harmful actions are stopped at a federal level.
Thanks, Patricia. Um, I, uh, let's see, I worked with the TSSD, they hadn't done a fraud assessment for the state auditor in a few years. So we sat down for a few hours and went through a bunch of, uh, back, uh, paperwork with the TSSD. That was not fun, but necessary. So, um, I also attended a legislative subcommittee hearing along with Bill and Melody and, uh, and our admin. And we, uh, we talked with our lobbyist Cody and we kind of directed him as to which legislation and what types of, uh, things that we'd like him to pay extra attention to or possibly, um, work on our behalf. And, uh, it's kind of a, just an introductory session to talk about. You know, what, what we'd be interested in especially and the things we probably bring back to this body. And those were, those were good discussions and we decided to meet weekly on Mondays during the legislative session. And Melody or Bill probably has more to add to that, feel free, uh, when the time comes. Also attended a CPACE discussion with Bill and Amy, um, to discuss whether we wanted to, the county wanted to be the pass-through for CPACE funds, which are, it's a commercial development funding and it's done to promote energy efficiency in building and green energy. I believe there have been some projects in the past that the county has, or some developers have used CPACE funding for. The county is kind of a pass-through and is responsible for a certain amount of paperwork. So I think, I think that that meeting went well, we had some questions answered. Unfortunately, Stephen wasn't able to attend, I think you were in trial. But I think, uh, I, I think where we landed was that, um, was that if the attorney's office was on board, then we'd probably go forward with that, but, but we'd kind of defer and, and get some further questions answered. But anyway, it was very informational. I also met with, uh, Matty from, uh, Grand County Active Trails, Active Transportation Trails and Brian. And we discussed, uh, kind of the role of the Maua Trails Committee and how we could kind of empower that committee a little bit. And I think the, uh, result of that was we were looking at doing, which we haven't had, Motorized Trails Master Plan. Um, and we were discussing and Matty did some further research into potential ways to fund that master plan going forward. And if Brian has anything to add to that, please feel free to, to, to do so. And that was the entirety of my couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCurdy?
Slightly under the weather, uh, quite a bit to report on. I was at many, uh, many events, meetings with several of you, so I'll let you guys talk about it while saving my voice to Nick.
All right, thank you.
Yes, uh, the, the end of the month is usually pretty quiet for me and this month was no exception. I did have a meeting with, uh, Melody and Brian and Stephen Vowles and Gabriel Wojtek and Ben, uh, Frederick Gail to discuss, uh, the budget between, with, uh, uh, travel council and, uh, economic opportunity. It was a very, very good discussion. Steven, Steve Vowles had a huge amount to offer and had, had a wonderful summary that for some reason I cannot open up. It won't open, it opened at home and it won't open today. So I was unable to, but anyway, it was, it was a very good, uh, very good meeting. Uh, and then the other thing I had was we had our quarterly, uh, a steering committee for the tailings removal and it went real well. It, uh, they're right on schedule. They're do, you know, we should have the tailings moved, we, the final of the tailings, but, uh, there will be other, uh, oh, what, what do they call it? Like dirt and such that's not part of the tailings, but it's been impacted by the tailings. And then so that, that's gonna have to be removed in some of the equipment. Uh, the trailers are, I took, we took a tour of the trailers not too long ago and, and they're pretty nice. And so I want to at some time organize a field trip for our commission and our staff, our administrative staff to go and look at them to see if that is something we want them to keep. You know, it, you know, it's, it's a real question because if you have a, uh, you know, a double, you know, prefab and it's not being used, it becomes then something you later have to dispose of. So we want to make sure it is something we want so that it becomes an asset and not an eventual deficit. Uh, but some of them have wonderful meeting spaces. I could see us being able to eventually use them, uh, to rent out, uh, for office space. But I think it's something that within this year, we should have a field trip and go out there and look at it. Because they are totally willing to work with us and try to leave the space for, uh, legacy management at a level that's going to make it easier for us to move forward with our desires to create a lovely space for the citizens of Grand County. They're, they're monitoring, they're working on the final plans for water, uh, monitoring the water and that's going to be ongoing probably for. And that's going to be ongoing probably for over a hundred years. So no matter who ends up with final ownership of the property, legacy management, which is a department of the Department of Energy, will continue to, you know, monitor, be part of it. And, uh, because we want to make sure that the groundwater stays safe and, and there's real rules on, uh, how, what type of, what can be moved and what can't be moved. Belle Jackson came up with a great idea of, uh, taking some of the fill that we don't, we were trying to dispose of from the floods, from buildings and such, and, um, taking it to the site, uh, Matt, the head of the, uh, is going to see if that's possible so that they can use that for ground cover because the ground is going to be fairly bleak of nutrients. Because it's been scraped down, scraped down to the core. Now, it was a really, uh, as usual, interesting meeting, uh, uh. So that was what I have done for the last two weeks besides just listening to what's going on at the legislature's reading and watching and, trying to keep up on, on the fast moving pace of our legislative, state legislative body. And as Trish said, I, I hope I'm, I, I don't want any of the actions that are happening nationally to negatively impact our, our economy and it has great potential to do so.
Thank you, Mary. And I think the word they were using was overburdened.
Thank you. I was.
That, that's what I remember also. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Brian, go ahead.
Thanks. So let's see here, on the twenty-second, I was at a policy steering committee for government. There's nothing really to report from that. And then also one on tax and revenue. There were a couple of things that were of interest. SB fifty-two, um, ties, uh, ties insurance, right? With vehicle registration. So you might be able to find out if people are basically registering out of state and then keeping vehicles here. So it kind of helped tie those together. It was pretty interesting. Um, also there's SB ninety-one, which is a, uh, um, a bill on the TRCCA. And it's to include prepared foods from grocery stores into it. And that's, that's something that we should watch. I think for some of the other communities, it's a, it's a bigger, uh, uh, topic. For us, I mean, it's kind of like, oh, man, I mean, like, I know that my kids go there for lunch at high school. So it's probably actually will just negatively impact us a little bit, but that's something to watch right there. Um, also on January twenty-second, I went out into, uh, with the Motorized Trail Committee and we did a scout on fins and things for the rake and ride. And, uh, it was really nice. We had a pretty diverse group of, uh, people there. We had people who, you know, ride motorcycles, people who had UTVs and people who jeeped all together. So you got a lot of different perspectives on some of the trail work that really needs to get done out there. And they identified a really nice project right there by the exit where they're trying to block off some of the social trailing that might happen. Um, let's see, on the twenty-third, I volunteered at the Free Health Clinic.
Yeah.
Right? And I was, uh, uh, the guy I got to do the auto refractor, right? Which is this really cool machine that helps kind of, um, estimate the prescription for the doctors. Um, you know, it was, it was really nice that Hope Alliance came down here. It was a total of a hundred and forty Moabites that received free vision screening. Um, forty of them were at the school and a hundred of them were at the Moab Free Health Clinic. It's a, it's an amazing service that we provide. Um, let's see, on January twenty-seventh, um, I was with, uh, uh, Mary and with Melody as well at the Economic Subcommittee. Um, I'm just going to go over just a couple of the things that we came up with, from Stephen Vowles right there. Um, so, so one of the big ones is, is that we want to be able to move, or we would like to recommend to the commission, um, to move funds from, uh, Fund Twenty-three, which is Travel Council, um, for economic development expenditures and move slash manage them in either A Fund Sixteen, um, the Economic Development Fund, or B into the General Fund. Um, two, uh, economic development will separate promotion cost from the cost of administration and the promotion, uh, expenditures of the budget line. Um, three, we'll separate the, there's like eight hundred and eight, eight thousand eight hundred, uh, in a, in the, uh, training account. And we're going to separate that out from staff training and for, um, and, and, uh, and staff engagement, right? So those two accounts kind of got merged together and they should probably have been split off. Um, also there was, uh, um, let's see here, they're gonna, we're still waiting on some additional details, uh, regarding the education, um, fund that they had, or line that they had on there. And then, um, let's see here, economic development will remove two of the other categories and the membership. There were some multiplying still left over from when we did the fund transfer over. So we had two other categories that were sitting inside of memberships. So we just want to make sure that we get that cleaned up. Um, let's see here, one of the big ones, uh, the Commission, Travel Council and TCAB, uh, will determine the criteria, scope, parameters and spending limits around the branding efforts before we pursue that, before we pursue that. Um, but we do think that it's actually something that is worth pursuing and looking into. Um, the cost benefits, um, as well of keeping economic development a function of the Travel Council, or if we should look at moving it into another department or another one of the items that we brought up. I'm sorry, I'm losing my place here. Um, and then the terms for Economic Development Department to begin operating and spending towards their departmental goals. Um, I think that the, the easiest way that we can kind of get that cleared up, um, was one of the last findings right here is that we should go ahead and amend our budget. So the recommendation is that we would open up the, uh, for public hearing in the next, uh, uh, meeting, um, amendment on that budget, creating that fund transfer from twenty-three to sixteen, plus the small little details that we've had inside of there as well. Um, and then the last thing, which is probably the most fun is, um, just how we want to, if, do we want to rename the tra, uh, Economic Development Department? So rather than having this, uh, uh, confusion of economic development and travel council and kind of where it all goes, come up with a new name. Um, you know, a couple of ones that I looked up, um, just on my own were, you know, Office of Tourism. Seems like it's the new standard for DMO. So whether it's, you know, the Moab Office of Tourism or the Moab Area Office of Tourism, um, we just need to come up with how we want to name that department so that we're, we stop having that perception of that confusion of is it economic development or does it get back to travel council? Um, let's see here. Uh, that same day I went to the Noxious, uh, uh, Weboard and that was actually really fun. Um, let's see, they retained Jordan Nesbit as the chair and Tim Higgs as the vice chair. Um, we reviewed the bylaws and they passed along a couple of recommendations. Um, I don't know if, uh, 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 that should go over to Stephen or if that, all, if that committee is still going to be, uh, joining, that's going to be going over the policies. A couple of them where they, uh, they would like to see some of the requirements to join the board, uh, in their bylaws, the membership duties, and then, uh, a dismissal clause, um, for due cause on their bylaws, um, as well as just cleaning up a couple of small little things that were in there. Um, let's see, Rim to Rim presented on the five million dollar, five-year, I can see CWDG grant, um, which assists with urban weed and fire fuel reduction, um, which is really interesting. You know, we're going to be, it seems like they're going to be doing some really great work, um, cleaning out some of our spots where, you know, we might be seeing some wildfire or, or some weed fires come in. So it's, it's nice to see, you know, one project that's basically taking care of two, uh, two, two needs that we have here. Um, Corey from USU, uh, presented on the Soil Health Boot Camp. That's going to be on February twenty-seventh at the Grand Center. Um, and it's going to be welcomed to both home gardeners and farmers. So that's, that's kind of a neat thing to have there. Um, yeah, let's see here, on the twenty-eighth, I was with, uh, uh, Trish and Mike once again on that housing subcommittee. Um, we set the goals of what we were going to be looking at. Um, let's see here, the first is going to be, we're going to find out what updates since the two thousand twenty-three Affordable Plan was out. Uh, we're going to monitor the state legislation, uh, legislative acts around affordable housing. Um, we're going to try to look at the increasing of housing to a hundred and fifty dwelling units per year. Um, we're going to try to implement the top five objectives of the Affordable Housing Plan, uh, Plan and strategize for efforts to meet those objectives. Um, and then we want to look how to effectively unify, utilize the funds set aside, uh, set aside. So we have the two thousand twenty-five, Mike?
Uh, I don't mean to interrupt. Uh, Trish, double check, uh, meeting is next Tuesday, not?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, Corey. Yeah, and then the two thousand twenty-five appropriations that we had of a hundred, uh, uh, of a hundred thousand from the county commission and also the fees in lieu of affordable housing. And then six, we wanted to look into the HDHO and the ADL. Um, we got a great list of people that we've invited into the subcommittee for our next meeting, which is not this Tuesday, but next Tuesday. Um, and, uh, let's see, that's going to be Tony Mancuso, then Riley, um, I believe Caitlin Myers, Laura Harris, uh, Mary, um,
Hoffine.
Hoffine. Thank you, Isaac. Mary Hoffine. She's got a funny email address. Um, uh, Amy, uh, um, the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator or someone from their office will be joining us. Uh, Aaron Lindberg has been invited and then Rani Schultz from the financial, um, um, side of things will be there as well. Hopefully we can start making some, some movement there. Um, on the twenty-ninth, uh, I once again, uh, attended the P, uh, the Policy Steering Committee for the Government and for the Tax Revenue. Um, to note on that one was SB forty, which is the optional sales tax. Um, and it's where our EMS gets its funding from, right there. It's one of the, the big funding sources from that. I don't know if Melody, do you want to talk a little bit more about that or do you want me to go into it? Yeah, so it's a, a substitute that grandfathers in counties with taxes in place. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm not one, not as familiar with it as Melody, but I believe that our tax is going to be expiring in the near future. This bill right here will allow that tax to continue, um, and not have to go back onto the ballot. Right here, so we would be grandfathered in at the same rate. However, if we were to change our rate from, I think it's a point, zero point five up to one percent, which I think is, um, uh, maximum allowable, we would have to go back onto the ballot. So, and we would not then receive that grandfather.
So there is a grandfather clause now.
It wasn't for a while. Have they put it in?
That's, that's what this bill is right here. This bill right here is that substitute clause. It's not passed yet, but it's, 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 it's in committee. So it's just something to look into right there. Um, let's see here, on January thirtieth, I went to the UAC, uh, Legislative Committee. Um, if you guys have interest, I can tell you guys what, uh, UAC has supported, um, what they oppose and what they're monitoring. But it was really interesting and like Trish said, I mean, it moved really fast. Um, and it's great because I got to learn, you know, that basically the, the conversation should be had at these policy steering committees. And once it basically reaches the, uh, uh, Legislative Committee, I mean, it's time to, it's time to move. You know, your question should have already been answered.
And, and UAC had that bill tracker that is great. Anybody can access it anytime to look at what's, yeah, there.
And then they, then they notify you when there's going to change. It's really nice.
Um, let's see, we met with, uh, uh, Representative Kennedy, um, and just got a chance to meet with him. That was really nice. Um, and we also met with Utah Senators and that was, uh, me, Mike and Bill. Uh, met with Utah Senator Winerton, um, who's looking at putting on a, a local impact mitigation tax for gas and oil production. And I, and I, and I could be wrong, but I believe it was like five cents on every gallon of, or I'm sorry, every barrel of oil that we come out with. And I think it's ten cents for every, I can't remember what the measurement was for the, uh, natural gas. But these are, but these funds right here would be for, uh, uh, a road repair, right? So road repairs that they're actually on and they would have to be paid for. Um, the bill that he's talking about doesn't have a number just yet. So it's just, it's just kind of in, in, in the mix.
Was there an estimate of how much, uh, how much would be generated?
Uh, for some of the other counties, yeah, they did, they did put that together, but I, I did not get an estimate for Grand County. Yeah, so, but it would be some funds and, you know, looking at it, it probably would be mostly on like the three thirteen road.
Yeah.
Something like that right out there would be.
Heavily traveled road for oil and gas.
Yep, exactly. Um, uh, also at the, uh, 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 at the UAC conference, uh, we got a chance to hear Steve Waldrop talk and that was really nice. Um, and also Celeste Malloy. Steve Waldrop is the Senior Advisor for Housing. So he had quite a bit to say. It was, it was really interesting. Um, and then I also had a chance to pass off some of our comments on HB thirty-seven, which is a high density, density overlay, um, that the state is looking into. And a couple of the things that maybe we might have learned from our HDHO as well, um, so that, that if the bill does come down from the state, it'll be a little bit more usable for us. Um, let's see here, uh, you know, one of the things that we mentioned is like this, is the state is looking at twenty percent growth in ten years, um, which is, is, is really interesting because if you look at our housing affordability plan, that's right about where we're at as well. So those two numbers seem like they jive pretty good, um, which, which I thought was, was, was really cool. Um, and they're also very interested in communities with open jobs and no housing, uh, which I'm sure is a lot of towns here, out here in, you know, rural Utah. Um, but definitely, uh, uh, of interest to us. So I'd like to make sure that we're, you know, in that, in that subcommittee that we're in, able to pass off some of those recommendations and maybe some of those statistics to him as well. Um, we also had a chance to meet with, uh, uh, Monsoon and, uh, Hinkins and passed off, you know, our support of HB two thirty-nine, which is state, which is a bill that, uh, deals with state funds for the county after disaster when we do not receive federal assistance. Um, I think that today on our agenda, Corey is going to be presenting on that. So we'll probably go into a little bit more about what that grant is right then. Um, let's see, on the thirty-first, we had the Rural Caucus. Um, and then once again, we got to hear Congressman Malloy, um, speak. And she had this really cool thing that she was talking about, which is the Utah Congressional, um, briefing, um, which is a thing where they actually bring, uh, um, delegation, which is staff members and, uh, out here to rural Utah and show them the parks and have a chance to talk about their issues. Historically, it's gone out to St. George, that area, um, but we're trying to see if we can work with her. This year they're going to be, uh, uh, going, moving around by plane. So it would be great if we could actually talk them into stopping by here in Grand County and seeing some of our parks and, you know, being able to talk about some of the issues we have. Um, I think that would be a great opportunity. Um, they also had, um, something on there that, that I thought was really interesting, which is the Utah Rural, uh, Project Portal. And this is a capital projects dashboard. Um, and, and that was really neat. You can actually look up any capital project that's going on anywhere inside the state and see where it's at inside of its, uh, uh, progress. Um, seemed like it was a very helpful tool right there. Um, after that, we went to the Tourism Day on the Hill and that was a whole lot of fun. We had a whole bunch of people from Grand County out there. Uh, we had the Trail Ambassadors and we had, uh, the entire Economic Development Department, um, and they were out there passing out stickers and, um, you know, uh, I think, uh, spill kits and rag bags and all the fun stuff out there. Um, it was neat, uh, um, let's see here, Natalie Brandle, uh, who's the head of the Utah Office of Tourism. She spoke and we have a really great presentation. Um, right now, there's a couple of things that are, that are of interest to us. Right now they're looking to cut five million to the Tourism Marketing Performance Fund, um, and that's, that's where we get our co-op money from. So they are looking at reducing that fund right there and that would be concern of us. Um, also there's a HB two fifty-six, um, it's a very interesting bill as well. And that's the short-term rental, uh, compliance right there. And so what that is right there is it will allow us to go and look on to things like, uh, Airbnb or what's the other one that people use?
Vir, Virgo or something.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, VRBO. Yeah, yeah. Anyways, we will be able to look at those programs right there. And just having your property listed on there would be cause for us to go ahead and move into compliance. That's always been one of the big hurdles. It's actually one of the reasons that we have a program. I think it's like twenty-seven thousand dollars, um, that would save us because we would no longer need that program.
Was that Rep Binion?
Uh, you know, I can't remember.
It was Binion, wasn't it?
She, well, she, she, yeah, she brought up something similar last year that, that didn't get much traction.
So hopefully to get, because they, it was until.
It is, yeah, great.
Two thousand and about fourteen, sixteen, that they did that where they made it, you couldn't go online and look to see who was advertising as a purpose. That wasn't a good enough reason and it really handicapped us. So this is good news that we're going back the way it is.
Yeah, and it would be nice for us. I mean, just looking at our budget, you know, that we did so closely, we, we have a program, a government OS program. I mean, that's twenty-seven thousand dollars a year that that saves the county right there off the top. I mean, it's, it's.
And we had to do it because otherwise there's no way to monitor.
Yeah. Also, uh, uh, other fund stats, we have, uh, uh, twenty twenty-three tourism, um, just for the state, uh, well, I'm sorry, for, for Grand County, the twenty twenty-three numbers from Gardener, if you guys haven't heard that is, so it's four hundred and forty million dollar economy that tourism, um, provides here for this town. Uh, that's three thousand nine hundred seventeen jobs, right? And eighty-six million dollars in tax revenue. So that's the type of economy that we're talking about, um, when we're, when, when, when we talk about our tourist economy. Right now for the state, the state is forecasting a six percent nominal growth. Um, so that's what they're, uh, uh, predicting across the entire state this year. It's a six percent nominal growth.
In tourism, in tourism, correct, yes. Um,
let's see here. Um, I also just wanted to mention as well, SB one ninety-seven, Chris Kaufman asked us to bring this kind of everyone's attention. Um, and this is a, a deferral of property taxes for seniors. Um, it, you know, it's, the, the, the gist of it is seniors basically would have to choose between financial hardship of paying their taxes, their property taxes, which are, uh, you know, increasing rapidly throughout. Between financial hardship of paying their taxes, their property taxes, which are, uh, you know, increasing rapidly throughout Utah. Um, or passing along potentially large debt to their heirs right here. So, um, you know, it's, it's a deferral. It's not a.
Not a forgiveness.
It's not a forgiveness, exactly. Um, and I think that's all that I had. Sorry, I took up so much time.
Very good report, thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad that you were so thorough because I don't have a voice to, to follow up on that. So I will just do a, a few recaps of what moves I was not in with the rest of you. So on Wednesday, uh, January twenty-second, I went to BLM meeting, um, on the Mill Creek Flooding Mitigation. We talked about detention basin feasibility. Um, it wa, it was about an hour and a half com, long conversation. And ultimately, um, they said that, that it's currently not in conformance with their land use designation. It's an ACEC, which is Area of Critical Environmental Concern. Um, it's also VRM two, which is the second most protected status. So this detention basin would be up above, um, the power dam on BLM property. And it would, it would hold the water as it came down and it would have a dam that would hold that water at a two thousand CFS. So that, because right now they've determined that Mill Creek floods at three thousand CFS, that that walls can't contain it. And so, um, but anyways, it didn't seem like a very. Um, feasible thing and Cora has a presentation. I think I emailed it to you guys. Um, so that you can look at that, but that was just one of the recommendations that was inside of that. Um, Mill Creek watershed plan. So there's other, other options to look at. On that same day, I went to, um, policy steering committees. I've been attending all of the policy steering committees from UAC. Uh, it's been really educational to hear all the bills and it's also been, um, it's great to watch the ones that they motioned to support. And then the ones that they motioned to oppose and, and then just to monitor. And so every week those monitor ones come back and we look at those and see how they change or if they've just stayed the same. And, you know, and following those along with the bill tracker as well. So I'm excited to go up the state tomorrow and for the elected officials on the hill. And then to show up to the Thursday UAC Legislative Hearing to see some of these, some of this actually go live, what I've been watching online. Um. Let's see, we're going to meet again next Monday. So Mary, Brian and I are going to meet with our, um, Subcommittee. For Economic Development Travel Council on Monday, we're going to talk about goals and, uh, for those particular. Um. Boards departments, um. Then I, uh, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. See, I've had two legislative subcommittees with Bill and Jacques and Cody and also Stephen showed up this week and Mark. And we, we have a nice timeline that we've put together. Um, and we've also shared that with Representative Monson. As far as our parties, which are all of those same ones that Brian talked about, um, the EMS funding, the. The, um, housing amendments, pull that one up really quick and I've got them right here, zoning amendments, um, centrally assessed. The Green River Pipeline, um, so the healthcare tax, SB forty, the SB one ninety-seven, which is eliminating low income senior tax abatements. As well as some on the federal level. So that is, that's happening with Cody and. I attended the Four Corners Mental Health Board and the Southeastern Utah Public Health Board. The, then on the Economic Opportunity Advisory Work Session, and we'll talk more about that later today. Economic, uh, and then again on Wednesday, the regularly scheduled Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, and we'll also discuss that later. Um, Thursday, I went to the Chamber, uh, Chamber along with H, the forty-seven G, Utah Advanced Materials Institute hosted. A Utah Small Business Workshop with, um, EDA Tech Hubs Program. And more policy steering committees. Then I think that is all for now.
Good job holding the voice together. Um, a lot of what Brian and Mike were part of, I was as well up on the hill and I'm certainly not going to recap all of that again. And further add to the meeting, but, uh, there are a couple that I was a part of that I will go over. Um, one of them was the SB ninety-one that Brian mentioned, the prepared foods. What they're looking at there is that if you put in an order at a window or a counter. And they go prepare your food, that will be taxed. So most of the stuff that you see at Maverick and other convenience stores that's out for grab and go is not going to be included in the restaurant tax. As it's currently written, so clearly hasn't passed yet. We could see some further changes. But if you go into an Arby's that's in a gas station or a truck stop and order food, that will, in the future, be considered. Taxable when it hasn't been in the past. So I had that one. I've had a discussion and I don't have the bill number in front of me. Um, there's some discussion around some medical cannabis that's going to possibly affect Grand County in the future here. And it's just in the beginning stages and I'll be a little better prepared to report on it at the next meeting. There'll be more movement on it.
So it's like opening it up more, Bill?
What's that?
Opening it up more?
Yes, and, uh, and some ways, yes, and in some ways, no. So in some ways, they're trying to restrict people who already have licenses. In favor of someone who doesn't and, and it's, I, I don't totally understand all of it yet, but it's, it's just barely getting some moving. Movement. Um, I also had a meeting with Tracy Tabit, I believe is how you pronounce her last name. And so we'll go over some of that later, but it's, um, regarding the CJC and the funding that's available there. Let's see, I was also part of the oil and gas one, and the only reason I bring that back up is that there is some road work. That would be able to take place with that tax money out around Cisco that also would qualify, I believe, in some of that very rural part of the county. As well as maybe even over towards Green River, some of that. So it, it isn't just the, what is that, three thirteen going up to, there's a few other roads. They do have to be paved, but that's, um. Seems that Winerton has good support for that and again, we don't have a bill labeled out on that one, a number yet for it, but we'll follow along with it. And so that, that's really all I've got to report on this one. Oh, I was part of the Airport Board Meeting. And we are working on the advertising policy and the bylaws a little bit to. Clean some of that up and to add a few things. So that's all I've really got on my report and we can move on to other elected Stevens.
Yes, so last week we had a, uh, a serious jury trial, five, uh, counts involving a child. They're all felony ones. Uh, the information was provided to the jury. They deliberated for two hours and they convicted on all counts. Um, these things happen in this community. These things are important to be mindful of. Um, it was a fantastic effort by the Moa Police Department, uh, Detective Sterry, Detective Drexler did a phenomenal job. Uh, the CJC did a wonderful job about receiving the interview and the court was wonderful in being able to provide the opportunity to do the jury trial. So that was last week that ate up, uh, the bulk of my, my time as I was the lead attorney on that. Um, uh, regarding pace, I did meet with the, uh, provider regarding that. She gave me a rundown. Um, and she indicates that it is not like it was before and that it should be easier on the attorney's office. Uh, I know my predecessor was not, uh, ecstatic about a repeat of the amount of work that it was because it was originally in its infancy. And so based on what she's provided to me, I think my office would be willing to do that. Um, so that'll be something that will move forward. Uh, additionally, when, whenever there's a request for bylaws, um, my recommendation for any of the boards that want to change the bylaws. Give it a s, give it a, a stab of what you want to accomplish with the bylaws. I'm not here to tell those boards what they should or shouldn't do, but if they have an idea of what they're looking, looking to do, they can kind of say, hey, we're having a forum issue. We're having this problem. We want to do voting in a particular manner. If they have that idea, it's great if they like start that process or if they want myself or Chrissy Hoffine to attend their meetings. If you guys request us to be at a meeting, um, I'll do my best to be able to appear. Uh, apart from that, um, the CJC hosted a, an event on. Uh, trafficking on children. I, I can't recall if that was since the last meeting. Um, but that was a, a good event. It was well-attended. And then I had an opportunity to provide, uh, some overview of, of a liability training for SAR, for search and rescue. Um, they had a presentation by one of their SAR members, Joe, who did a wonderful job. And then I provided some information and input regarding some of their questions. Uh, their hypotheticals are always really fun. So that, that was an excellent, uh, excellent training that, uh, Sergeant Heinz put on. So I think that's pretty much everything that I have. Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I'm busy tracking bills as you all are, especially as it relates to things like proper detox administration and elections, of course. Um. See, there's just so much going on right now, but I, I think I am sort of starting to sort of feel caught up and, and really looking forward to. Diving into some of the, the policies and, and procedures and, and, uh, things that my, my office, uh, uh, you know, has involvement with. Uh, across the county and so, you know, just going to take this, uh, first period of the year to really, uh, look for, wh, anywhere we can improve. Um, whenever possible and. The other, uh, there was one other thing. I can't remember now. Oh, yeah, uh, Josh Nielsen from the State Tax Commission. Uh, uh, Assessor Swayze and I had a call with, with Josh and, uh, Matt and Jared. We work with those guys closely with the, um. With the Tax Commission and, um, yeah, we're having some, they're, they're going to help us along and really sort of revamp the way that Grand County has handled BOE. Um, it's going to involve a lot more, um, involvement from my office and I, I welcome that. I think that there's a lot of processes that can be improved. I think everyone agrees. Um, and I'm looking forward to, to really kind of bringing us up to a, a much higher standard and, um. Sort of, um, avoiding some of the hiccups that we've seen, um, that just really, um, have been, have been tricky to try to get to in time. Um, since I've been in this office. So I'm really looking forward to that. And one last thing, I'm really sorry I didn't get the minutes in. I'm not proud of it, but I'm really close. There were some really honker meetings there at the end of the year. And I just want to make sure it's done once and accurately. So I'm really hoping that next, next, uh, meeting, we'll see minutes.
Thank you, Gabe, and I don't see our sheriff on, so with that, I would say we go to our admin, sir.
I don't have anything to share, um, at this point, other than it's been very busy and. We have multiple lists we're working on, so, uh, just, just bear with us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and we don't have a public hearing, okay, on the list. All right then, we can move into our general business action items. We will move on to number one, which is the twenty twenty-five quarter. Three High Impact Special Event Intent to Apply Submissions. Ladies.
So I've been doing special events, as you know, for the last little while since Kate left. But we just got Jenny Beth straight out and she'll be taking over for on out and she's done a great job so far. Really, really glad we have, um.
Okay, and I apologize, I didn't introduce the two of you, Alicia. Thank you, and Jenna Beth, thanks for coming up.
So, it's okay, real quick, there's only a couple for this upcoming quarter. There's only two on there, but just so you know, there's still a few on that pre-authorized list that you guys did at the end of last year for this year. Which will have like that mode music festival and what is it, the Outer Bike? Um, and then there's also all the O two events are not in this either. So just in case anybody's surprised by that. So we'll just start, so all the events for July through September. Um, there were no high-impact events submitted for July or August. Um, September starts, has the Skinny Tire Festival, which is a cycling event. Um. The daily attendance estimation is three hundred and fifty. Um, they've been around for about twenty-one years, um, formerly known as the Live Century Tour. It's a three-day cycling event that covers all of the amazing landscape. Then the John Wayne Grit Series, the running and walking event. They're estimate, um, sorry, September twenty-seventh estimating about five hundred people. Uh, mostly takes place on public lands and they do a, um, ten K and a half marathon. And it's all a fundraiser for their cancer condition. Those are it for you to decide on tonight. Uh, like I said, I just want to know more about some of the other events, like what you don't.
Yeah, Mary.
I would like to make a motion to accept the high-impact, uh, events of Ski, uh, Skinny Tire and John Wayne Grit.
Motion by Commissioner McGann and seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Any other discussion?
I just, I just had a question about the, uh, the Skinny Tire Festival. How, uh, it's been around for twenty-one years. I know it's been, it's great. I've attended it many times. How, how was that not a legacy event or, or is that?
Um, I just didn't make it off the list last year. I'm not sure since I wasn't really part of it at that point, other than the surface level.
Oh, was that?
New ownership? A new ownership?
Okay.
My, my memory might not be as great, but I remember the, we had at one point an Excel sheet up with a list of items. And then I, I don't know if it either didn't make the cut or if.
Probably just.
I thi, I think, I think it was, I think there was quite a bit of scrutiny to be considered that legacy icon. Uh, back when we did it and I thought, let, I think that, if my memory serves, it was less rather than more, made the list, maybe just didn't make it for that reason.
Yeah, right, okay.
I want to pull up the final list that was approved at that meeting. Is that helpful? But for what I'm, I'm not sure why they.
And is it something that we would future, want to consider moving to the legacy? I would think.
At twenty-one years.
Just for us, no, guys, can you tell us what that legacy list is?
It, I think it's, what, what did we settle on? It was either, was it eight years? Events that have been around for at least eight years previously and didn't have any black marks next to their name. They, no one brought anything up. So they, they, they were basically an established part of the community and those got kind of preferential treatment when we were looking at the special events.
And they had certain, uh, certain guidelines, uh, to hit, uh, certain targets to hit. Uh, but it also gives the ability for those event hosts, uh, to plan farther out for some of these larger la, legacy events.
I'm sure we can find the parameter list that we base that off of in that old agenda. I'll just have to figure out. Can't remember exactly which meeting this was decided on, but once we figure that out, um, I think I'm sure it's probably on the agenda summary night.
Good. Anybody else?
Steven, did you have some? Just to note, the reason, the original reason why we had the legacy events as well, is the commissioners would have given that event preference on that particular weekend. So if there was a newcomer event that tried to apply for a weekend that, let's say, for example, Chief Safari, that's always historically been during that period of time. Uh, the commission might, might kind of put that in the calendar list as a placeholder. And I think on our agenda today, there's a copy of the list or the calendar list of those events. And so those would be put on the kind of more as, uh, prior to treatment.
Most of the events are not on that calendar, but I did bring the list with if you guys.
And that placeholder was, uh, was put there or at least, uh, on the calendar list. Because even if, even if an event, one that's been around for a while fell through. It was an availability without going through the full IDA process to get them in there to fill up that weekend. Uh, rather than just say no to both of, or one event not able to host and the other event got a no early on. So that's why it was a placeholder.
Anybody, anything further?
Um, it does, I'm looking at this. I don't know if this is self or not, but does look like across the top there there are some of the criteria. Based on, and there's the timeframe, the recurring, whether or not it was in good standing or had local sponsors. And then kind of that educational, cultural, community, family and historical value there on the side. I don't remember that being part of the discussions. But I can definitely find that criteria that we put on.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, almost every single one of them was a locally, a loc, had a local sponsor and I noticed this one didn't.
I knew it used to, so maybe that was the, the change of ownership that, uh, Jenny Beth mentioned there.
Yeah, Brian.
Yeah, were there, um, were there quite a few or were there other events that, that basically didn't make this list? Was this, um, basically an elite list of a large group or was this?
I think, I'd have to look for sure, so don't quote me on this, but it seems like. Pulled everything that was eight years or more and then dumped that and then the commission hashed it out in the meeting and decided what they.
It was, that list was double what that was?
Yeah, I, I feel like it was a heftier list, it was all high-impact and they were all, I think, eight years or more. And then I think it started getting kind of narrowed down from there, but.
I would say that if we were going to look at one, I think that we would be wise if we looked at all of them and see who else kind of applies or falls into that zone.
Thanks for the work. Good point. So we have a. Motion by Commissioner McGann, I believe, and seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. Um, do we want any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? That passes unanimously. We can move on to.
They'll be very.
I have a.
Thank you, ladies.
Quick question while I do this here. Uh, in looking towards, uh, reports, after-event reports, I can't think of the name exactly. Uh, will you be handling all the after-event reports? Yeah, post-event reports.
Yeah, there's two. So there's one that automatically gets sent to the event holder through E-Google.
Yes.
And then there's the other one that goes to all of our, um, referral agencies.
Okay. And we have those on file for the next year's application timeline. Yeah, thanks.
The ones in the approval, we can pull up pretty easily. The other ones are in a Google form that are also fairly.
Okay.
Kind of organized, uh, special event folder.
Thank you.
So if you ever want to see them, we can share it with.
It'll probably come up.
All right. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. And the next one is a resolution approving the final plat for Lance Avenue Plan Unit Development, PUD. And Amy, oh, Stephen stocks.
I'll I'll be covering for her. Um, so just going into this one, I'm gonna read through the summary of requests and the history for the commissioners. And then also on this one, there's additional items that need to be done. They're on that first, uh, PDF that's attached underneath the agenda summary. I'm gonna guide you to them because we would like a motion to include those items and I can, uh, all say, I'll say a suggested motion as well.
Uh, on which which attachment?
It should be, we're on item number two. It's the one staff report.
Okay, staff report.
Right.
Okay, that got it.
So I'll just read through the the background. So the applicant is requesting approval of a final plat for Lance Avenue, PUD. County Commission approved the PUD rezone application master plan and development agreement on June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four under ordinance seven zero-two, which is attached for the purpose of developing a two-lot workforce housing subdivision. The PUD approved a workforce housing density bonus per land use code section four point four, point nine, to allow for smaller lot sizes. The recorded development agreement, which is attached, outlines the requirements for the units constructed on two lots to be deed restricted for active employee households per the definition in the Grand County LUC. In addition to being deed restricted for actively employed households, the project, consistent with the community rebuilds mission, will be accessible to families at or below eighty percent of the median, uh, household income. The homes will be built and sold through the mutual self-help homeownership program. Development on the property includes zero lot line homes on both lots A or two A and three A. Lot three A will be accessible by a required twenty-foot access drive. The setbacks for the development will comply with the underlying SLR zoning, twenty-foot front and ten foot on the rear and side. The area of each of the two lots, as reflected in the plans, are as follows, lot two A, three thousand two hundred and ninety-one square feet, lot three A, four thousand four hundred and eighty-one square foot. Additionally, for commissioners, uh, note, under item C, three A through D and four are necessary additions that we need to add. So if a motion could state that they need to make the corrections listed in three A through D, as well as item number four. That's.
So moved.
But you have to put, you have to state it in the motion, correct?
Correct. So, um, so essentially the motion we would be looking for is you would you would need to combine the summary motion that's on the agenda summary that says something to the extent of a motion to approve the final plat. So that language on that's, uh, agenda summary and then with the additions. C, three A through D and item number four.
Can you repeat that?
Yes. So on the agenda summary, there's a recommended motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I I I move to, um, approve the final plat for Lance Avenue's PUD with the following criteria added. Title shall be changed to read as follow. Final plat of Lance Avenue, PUD. A subdivision of the lot, two-block, um, lot, uh, multi-vista, uh, subdivision located within the southeastern quarter of section seven T, two twenty-six S, R, twenty-two E, S, L, B and M. B, PUD plat notes shall be amended as follows. Lot shown as deed restricted shall be subject to ordinance seven oh-two and the recorded master plan and development agreement shall be subject to the following restrictions. C, PUD general design standards and PUD setbacks shall be combined as follow. PUD approval variations to SLR zone districts. Lot size reflect the variance accord uh, approved by ordinance seven oh-two and are reduced from the required point twenty uh, ma- minimum lot size to point eight acres and point ten acres. The maximum height of all structures is reduced from twenty-eight to twenty. PUD general design standards shall be amended to only include building exterior facade e- e- exterior finish to include all language current on the final plat. The app, uh, is that all or do I have?
No, as well.
Okay, the applicant is called calling the zero lot line homes, twin homes. The Grand County LUC does not currently have a definition or designation for twin homes. Per the LUC, these housing types are considered townhomes. So it could change to townhomes.
Second, okay, motion by Commissioner McGann, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Do we have any other discussion, anybody? All right, call for a vote. All in favor? Hi, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mary. Um, I'd have watched that in a big hurry. All right, so we will move on to number three, request for proposal. Sure, that's a very good idea.
So move to rural county grant?
Sure, we can move on then to number four, the rural county grant, um, fiscal year twenty-five revised scope with Forrest Rogers from Economic Opportunity Advisory Board Chair. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Forrest Rogers from the Advisory Board. I have invited Chris Wilson, also from the Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, to um, participate in this and help answer any questions. Um, Chris has been a, um, a close advisor, I shall say, to the, both to the chamber in their initial proposal and also to the, um, also to the community childcare. Uh, as we've worked to adapt to the, uh, requirements that, uh, have forced us to look at an alternative to supporting in this grant cycle the, uh, Chamber of Commerce in their efforts. Uh, I also would like to introduce Deborah McKee, uh, from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Some of you may already have met her. She has succeeded. Colette Cox in that role. And so she's carrying the flag for southeastern Utah and Grand County in particular in the same fashion.
Oh, I'm looking for you. Sorry, I.
I just begin by saying that the Advisory Board has has had the strength of both continuity and a diversity of of perspectives as it's gone through the last couple of RCG cycles and the Rural County Opportunities Grant Cycle. And I think that's been, that's contributed to our ability to be very nimble when we encounter a a challenge as we have. The document you have explains that the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity was reluctant to move on the grant towards to the chamber for their business hub. Um, given the transformation that's going on there, leadership change and sort of the reset of a part of the chamber. And so we met, uh, we could go on to, uh, we could go today to take a look at our alternatives because we didn't want to let money stay in Salt Lake when it could come here. So I asked Chris to speak a little bit more to the to the specifics.
Yeah, so Forrest asked me if I could just talk a little bit about the budget, um, and the context here. And yeah, the basically the the short of it is that the the recommendation from Economic Opportunity Advisory Board is to move that funding that would have gone to the chamber to both community childcare, taking that to total up to two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, means a hundred and seventy thousand of that approximately would go to the building of a new structure on the property on Forker North where they have their current childcare operations. So that's on uh, at the Lutheran Church there. Um, and so this would just really help them be able to, you know, have a scope for that project that gets them a building that they can grow into and keep growing their operations over time. Um, the remaining thirty thousand is to be spent on workforce training and a couple of small infrastructure needs to support the certification of another private daycare, Sega Lily. Um, I mean, basically, Grand County over the last few years has support, supported local childcare as it got started as a nonprofit to support childcare needs in our community and has sort of grown their scope over the last couple of years. Um, in doing so, they've put a pretty significant dent in the number of sort of people that need but don't have access to childcare. Um, and then we thank all the board that that provides a really important economic return by freeing up people to be in our workforce and it's, you know, the way that our workforce is so constrained these days. Um, so I'd say Grand County's support there has been instrumental in their success. Um, what we really see this as is sort of a final send-off. You know, we don't think that, and I don't think the point of these grants is to be sort of ongoing support for an organization over time. It's to help them do something, help them be something that wouldn't be there otherwise for our community. Uh, and doing this, you know, really focusing on infrastructure for the final go. Uh, we think that we can set them up for success going on in the future and not really needing this grant support going in.
There's a clear understanding that this is the the launchpad in a sense for the community, uh, childcare. Um, we know that, I I believe many of you know that the board itself has been, um, frustrated by the challenges of getting projects that seem to be seem to meet the criteria and can be effectively, can be launched in that relatively short period of time that they have. So we have begun thinking about other and looking at other opportunities that the board will be able to look at as we move into the next grant cycle. I also want to thank Mark for his, um, willingness to step in and talk with, uh, the folks at, at Goey, Goyo in in Salt Lake, um, and especially the manager of the Rural County Grants Program.
Stephen, go ahead. Was there, was there ever a conversation about opening up this for applicants after the chamber weren't able to spend the money or they they weren't, uh, believed to do a good fit for this?
You you've noticed that that it's transmittal that it also provides a secondary option, uh, for the commission. Um, the the challenge we have is the the timing. These funds have to be expended by June thirtieth and trying to spend time to actually recruit projects or programs that really do meet the criteria in that short period of time, uh, pushed us to move with a known recipient that's demonstrated both the financial and the service delivery that is is essential in our community. But as I said earlier, Stephen, that's that's a concern for this group. And we appreciate any guidance or any advice or recommendations for how to broaden the pool of prospective applicants.
I think, I I and I've I've state stated this on each time this has come before us, I think advertising paper trail, uh, that needs to be a real push because this is the same applicant that's got it, got a good chunk of money before. And there are a lot of nonprofits in this community. And it's hard to see the same grant go to the same recipient, especially after they've sat on the board. Um, I think it's a great cause. I think it's a wonderful cause, uh, but I really think that that board, especially if it's something that's coming through the county, I think it's really critical to make sure we're trying to reach out and lift up all nonprofits that that are that fall within this, uh, this realm. So I'll just say that.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Martin.
Yeah, I just had a question. So how many applicants were, uh, did apply for this round of grants?
At the beginning of this grant cycle?
Correct, yeah.
I believe there were the two, the chamber and the community childcare. I don't remember a third.
I think there were other folks that started the process of having. But didn't end up being ready to submit an application with the commission, with the the office by the end of the process.
What does the timeline look like as far as, as basically you go ahead and advertise and then there's the time that they have to prepare and go through the application and get it in?
Deborah, I apologize. The 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 deadline for this next cycle, the grant cycle, is
approximately September. And so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Approximately. So we, you know, plan to start moving. We've been recruiting applicants for this current grant cycle, going out and holding meetings already so that we have a more robust pipeline moving forward. So I think the the question is something that we welcome. We've definitely already heard from the county attorney. But other advice on is if you'd like us to open a public sort of like announcement for applications. And that's something that you'd like to do, certainly something we could work with the department, obviously, that ultimately do that.
I I I'd encourage it. I I think these are, I mean, it's it's reasonable when people, and again, whether folks sometimes see it or not, we always get, you know, a lot of times the the commission, uh, will get a blowback of somebody saying, well, I I really wanted that X thing. And it's really nice to be able to point to the newspaper article or the the email blast or whatever it is and say, hey, we told the newspaper. I I think that's just a really, really good thing, especially whenever money's involved. I think there's always extra scrutiny for that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, uh, when we started this last grant, uh, cycle, there were quite a bit bit more people that came forward than having the past years, but the criteria is pretty tough. I mean, a lot of things we we would go, wow, that would be great and that would be wonderful for our community. But we couldn't directly tie it to helping our economy. It would be more indirect. While housing and daycare are too, um, uh, they're considered the infrastructure of, uh, economic opportunity and economic development. And so, um, you know, it's, Colette was working with us and we worked with her very closely and she was at every single meeting and we would hash out and look at different opportunities for, uh, professional kitchen was one we really researched. We were researching things to help with, uh, our wedding uh, economy. And and a lot of it was just the applicants themselves were, were uh, not ready. If they got the funds, they couldn't use the funds within the criteria that that was required. So that, in addition, makes, uh, the ability to, I mean, it's they're wonderful and I'm so glad our our county has access to these these funds. But, uh, they are somewhat of a narrow. They're not, they're not wide open for most of our nonprofits would not come, you know. For instance, uh, yeah, a lot of them wouldn't qualify. We couldn't, we couldn't justify it and and prove, take that line and prove that it fell into the block grant.
Um, no, I appreciate Cheryl's ability to pivot. I know this, uh, the 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 change happened pretty quickly. Um, we've been looking at, uh, going at the chamber and like you said, leaving, leaving, leaving money in Salt Lake City that could be spent down in Grand County for purposes that will that will help all of us. Um, it's great, definitely. Uh, I think Stephen had some good points going forward. But, um, this is now and I think, uh, that this is a great opportunity for the childcare program and that that building will just disclosureally built across the street from my house. So all the others people who are like not in my neighborhood, I I I'm I'm fine with that. Um, so on that note, I would, uh, move to approve the revised scope of the grant, county's fiscal year twenty twenty-five rural county grant, subsequent grant award for Moab Community Childcare for two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Adine. Did anyone else have?
I'll just make a quick comment. Um, I know that, uh, I do adult ed- education, so I help people either finish high school, prepare them for post-secondary education, and I have a lot of my students that have childcare provided by Moab Childcare. And so it, I, to me, I see the direct impacts because we're talking about people that are then furthering their education to get better jobs within our community and I think it has a huge impact. So, thank you so much. And I, I think it has a huge impact. So, thank you so much.
I, I too have supported this childcare thing since Rob first started. And I've put in countless volunteer hours to help him out down there. So I'm appreciative of what he's doing in our community. I'm also appreciative of the fact that we need to start broadening our scope. And one of the words that, that you said, Chris, was recruitment. And I think we have to be careful because there was a batch of grants that went out a couple of years ago that looked like they had been recruited. And what we really need to do in my mind, and I'm not trying to tell you how to do it, but there needs to be some advertisement in the paper with a, some parameters that if you fit this box, then you could apply for this grant with plenty of advertisement in advance of it, right? When given some dates and some times. You know, I, I really want to also thank and appreciate the fact that the governor's office is here. Um, with Ms. McGee and the fact that Colette and you both have worked with us over the years. It's, um, it's benefited not only the childcare thing, but other people in this community as well. And that's, that's a, just a thank you for that option and availability for us to tap into some of those funds. So, thank you guys and, oh, Mike, go ahead.
Sorry if I mixed words here. Uh, I do reiterate, reiterate what, uh, Stephen's talks and Commissioner Winfield said. I would love to see a paper trail. Uh, I would love to see that ad out in the paper. Uh, and we should be touting the win. Uh, we know that, uh, the grant was received last year, uh, also. And it's, it's not a bad place for it this year in my eyes. Uh, in any search, I'm, I'm happy for childcare, but, uh, what, how many kids, how many kids are being helped over there? Like, we should be screaming this from the rooftop, guys.
Uh, Rob, did you see Rob sent out actually an email with their annual report? Like, uh, I think it was just a week ago that we all.
See it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it came through. I can, I can dig it up and resend it if you want. It's a big report and it's.
Like sixty kids. Yeah, I read the whole, whole report because before, I wanted to be prepared before I went to that meeting to. Um, no, it was going on. So yeah, it's about sixty kids and it's. Preschool as well now. So they've got the preschool that's being operated out of the Lutheran church. Well, both churches. So Lutheran has the, the daycare and then the, um,
Community.
Community church has the preschool there, so.
But you know that they also put some, uh, some of those small grants are going to be helping the Sega Lily as well, um, out there with their, with their kitchen, so.
All right, I'll go to Mary and then I know Steve.
I know, and Rob keeps talking about it and I really, I really admire him for doing so. So that, uh, he wants to have the Moab Community Childcare finally become sustainable on its own. I don't see that happening really quickly. Cause right now we're doing a really, really good job. And what we've accomplished in the last four, three, four years has been amazing. I mean, it was a desert for childcare opportunity prior. But where we're missing is we still have a number of people in our community who income isn't even enough to be able to, uh, pay for the services as much as we try. Oh, they work really hard to keep them affordable. It's, it's hitting that, that group that, that didn't have access to it, but could have probably paid for it if they had access. Now they, but the group that doesn't have the finances to do so. And, um, I know Rob's looking at ways that we can offer grants. We can offer scholarships to help that group of the community. But I see that, uh, the, it's going to take a number of years. Not a few years, not a full years, a number of years to get our community to the point that we can go, oh, good. We've got the childcare we need. So I guess what I'm saying is if this ends up, he come, this, this, they come back for more money next year. And it is the best use of our money just because this program has been granted at once or twice. What it shouldn't, that should not be a criteria for turning it down because it is such a need in this community.
I would agree with that, Mary. I just think that if we have a broad advertisement out there and other people have the option, it looks a lot better and cleans it up. So I'm, I'm still in favor of the fact that we hope they get on their feet. But there's other people that have just as great a need in the community possibly, so.
I agree with you. I agree with that. I just wanted to just, because Rob keeps bringing it up almost at every meeting or any time I've met with him. We're going to become sustainable. We're going to come sustainable. And I said, great, I'm so glad you have that goal. But I recognize that this is a lofty goal. And if we're going to meet that goal and have the childcare we need in this community support are all of our families, our low income, our medium and our high income families is probably not a job that's going to, it's going to take a decade.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mary, I have a question. I, I haven't been involved with it. I think it's a fantastic service that's provided. Um, are they ready for this next step?
Oh, yeah.
We're not setting them up for failure by moving them up and they're not ready to, to make that jump right now.
When you, they already have the land figured out. When we, were, were you on that field trip with us? We went on a field trip, what we saw, all the work at the house, you know, because they helped, those grants helped with the, uh, center street. Parking and such, the, not the parking itself, but the landscaping to make it aesthetic. We are a wonderful, uh, field trip. And then at that time in Rod, they, the childcare, community childcare did not know at that time they would get some extra funds. They were pointed out where it was going to be built, what they were going to do, what, you know, maybe having fundraisers. They were already working on it because they want to be able to, uh, fill that void of preschoolers.
So, but, but they're also, they're not just the building, the project itself, but like staff wise, are they set to grow to that next level? Funding wise, are they set to go to this next level? We're not, we're not setting them up to where it's like, hey, we want you to grow to this next level because there's this need, yet the organization itself is not prepared for that.
They're already planning on essentially getting to this next level size wise. They come here by agreement that they have with synergy to start things over there, space for a while. Um, and then this would, they, the, the goal and one of the reasons why the onsite building is such a good model for them. That it allows them to staff more fluidly between the, what will be like the infant center and then this would be like flying older. Um, kids still pre, pre K, obviously. Um, so this, yeah, it, it allows them in terms of staffing to be more efficient. And it's growing at a pace that they're going to be growing with or without the building, just less efficient.
One of the, I'm sorry, one of the elements in this proposal is to actually start moving to grow our own child certified and credentialed childcare providers. And I think that's, that's the model that the school district has done sometime with growing our own teachers. And that's building as Chris said, building capacities in a stepwise fashion, uh, so that they don't get overwhelmed.
Very good. Thank you. There's nothing further than I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion. Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Forrest.
All right. We still don't have chorus, so we will move on to number five. The email marketing platform for Economic Development Department.
Hi. Thank you all for having me. This is so exciting.
And introduce yourself if you would please, mostly for the public. Some of us know you here, but.
I'm Ally Harper. I'm an assistant marketing director with Economic Development slash Travel.
Perfect. And then. There you go. Thank you.
There we go. Should I say it again? Okay. Hi, I'm Ally Harper. I'm Ally Harper. I'm an assistant marketing director with Economic Development slash the Moab Area Travel Council. Ally or Allison.
Perfect.
Um, great. So, um, so I know our budget is a little bit in flux right now, but, um, I'm coming to you today with two items that we'd really like to get started on. Um, the first one is this newsletter subscription. Um, so we haven't in the past had the capacity to do newsletters, um, but now we're really excited to. So I'm a MailChimp to view so, and I laid out for you in the background, some of those members and what I plan to use it for. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I know that, um, previously the travel council had that, um, maybe not with this current department. But previously they were, they used to send out, um, you know, newsletters and things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a platform called Emma.
Correct. And, and, and I'm not positive, but I believe that the county administration still has Emma as well.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure about the county administration, but I know that our account is closed.
Okay. And then have you guys talked with, um, with IT over this and which, where they, where they recommend for the type of service?
That's a good question. I haven't talked with IT, but I can do that.
Yeah. And then have you guys, uh, uh, been advised by the travel council advisory board yet on, on this campaign?
No, I kind of figured that newsletters would be something that they would want us to do, so I moved.
And then just a question, I know that we have a little later, I was, been reading the purchasing policy. It's every, anything on over five thousand dollars that requires the, the three bids, is that correct on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just wanted to make sure. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just here today because our budget is, at least our department, we think of it as kind of on pause right now. So that's why I'm here with something under five.
No, I mean, I, I totally support it. Those are just the questions that I have, you know, I want to actually, you know, before I would move forward, I'd want to actually have you go talk down to Matt. Um, Sinceros and just make sure this is the program that he would recommend as well.
Yeah.
And that we don't already have a subscription like through the county administration, you know, to, so that we're not paying for two services when we already have the service. Where all we have to do is basically just bump up our numbers on this, the, uh, the amount of emails that we're sending out. So that we, we're not paying for two subscriptions, just a level of service that we're going on to.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. So.
If no motion is provided, we can still not do any of that information.
If no action is, if, if no action is needed on an item or the commission doesn't want to have an action, you don't have a, have to have a negative item to deny it. It just doesn't have a motion and it just doesn't pass.
That's what I'd, I'd rather not deny it. I'd rather just hear that.
So I would suggest a motion based on that.
I, I would, I would like to make a motion to approve purchase MailChimp's subscription for the Grand County Economic Department. Department at the cost of two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month, which would equal three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for one year. Uh, dependent upon just, uh, researching to make sure there's not an, uh, a similar service offered within the county and by, and checking with Matt. Sinceras to make sure that this is the appropriate.
And perfect. And the travel council advisory board.
Were they? Okay, and, okay, the advertising and the travel council advisory board.
I'll second that. All right, motion by Commissioner McGann, seconded by Commissioner Martinez. Any further discussion? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And I believe the next one is you also, correct?
Yeah, this one's much more fun.
Familiarization tours. Thank you.
Yeah, these are cool.
Yeah, so familiarization tours, familiarization trips. Um, this is when like journalists, travel industry professionals come to Moab to learn about our area. So then they can write about it or make tours for it. Um, and these come to us through the Utah Office of Tourism right now. So I'm talking a lot with Ben Mabelstork and Quinnin about these stores. Um, I attached, uh, like a example email that I get from Ben. I'm, I'm, right now we have five in the works. Um, and so usually he'll email me and he'll give me a background and a rough itinerary and then a request. Um, so the Utah Office of Tourism has their own budget for these tours and then we do also. Um, and usually our ability to buy in is also our ability to direct where the people go. Otherwise it's up to the Utah. Um, and so I would love to start creating these tours and, um, like paying for certain things for people who come through. And so that's why this budget item is for you.
Yep, Brian, go ahead.
See, I'm, uh, uh, you know, I noticed that on the one that you were talking about, the GoPro one, um, Navtech is actually going to be, uh, providing the overnight river trip. And so I will be voting on this one right here. Um, but just once again, and, um, first off, I'm, I think that the familiarization tours are very valuable to our community. Um, it brings people in here who, um, get a chance to actually experience what we have. And then they go off, they write about it. They have, they talk to their other agents. Um, it just, it's a great way. I mean, I think it's a great bang for our buck. Um, and I'm very excited to see that the travel council is going to be, be participating in it again. Um, I've gone ahead and started working with the Utah Office of Tourism directly, um, you know, to start, you know, because I found such great value in them um, as a business. So I think it's a fantastic, fantastic, um, resource of ours. Um, but once again, I just want to ask, have you guys passed this through or any of these tours through the travel council advisory board?
Yeah, so, um, passing tours through the travel council advisory board, I think would be a little bit trickier because, um, I can, I'm happy to present the opportunities, but as far as organizing, where everybody's going, that's kind of like a great up in the air.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. I don't think as far as, I don't think as far as, you know, like what should they do or where should they go?
Yeah.
Maybe not on that direct level, but hey, these are the opportunities that are coming in so that they do have a, a chance to weigh in on it.
Yeah, yeah, very happy to do that.
Mike, go ahead.
As I break my mic. Honestly, twelve thousand dollars a year doesn't seem like that much. How much does Utah Office of Tourism put in? Uh, is there, is there, hey, a ground county line item that goes, they put in this much, we put in this much and we get this bang for the buck?
That's a great question and I don't know exactly what their budget is.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I agree with you, twelve thousand dollars a year. We, um, made that number when we weren't, when we hadn't like gotten these opportunities in front of us yet. And so some of them, like I said, can be as low as, you know, a couple of hundred dollars for dinner. But then some of them, like this GoPro one, you know, or find something for fourteen two. So that's much more expensive. So very in plus, but I think that's a great idea to ask them what their budget is.
Okay. And do we keep, was this, uh, this was done last year? Or this wasn't done last year? We're doing it again back again this year?
Um, so it's, 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 it's reoccurring, right? So basically, um, when you go to a big travel show, um, there'll be journalists there, there'll be travel agents there. And so one thing that they'll do is they'll come out and they'll say, great, we're going to go out and we're going to go tour Utah.
Yeah.
And so they'll talk, they'll, they'll contract through the Utah Office of Tourism. And then from there, the Utah Office of Tourism will say, great, we think that you should go to Moab. And then they'll contact our DMO and then our DMO will say, great, we'll set you up at this hotel. And they usually do like a, um, you know, the, the, um, travel agents have certain, um, ideas for their stories. They might be like, hey, I want to go see Arches and I want to go mountain biking. And so the, uh, uh, you know, in theory, our DMO would go ahead and call the, uh, the, the mountain biking companies all up and say, hey, we have these people coming in and then they would go ahead and provide a bid to our DMO. And then they would go ahead and get everything scheduled on up.
Okay.
Um, but I do agree with you one hundred percent. Twelve thousand does seem a little bit low to me. Um, especially when, when I looked at the, um, econo, or I'm sorry, the film commission has nineteen thousand set up for their familiarization tours. Both, I mean, one hundred percent, you're not going to get better bang for your buck. I mean, a twelve thousand dollar, I mean, we just approved a Grand County, uh, Circles ad for seven thousand dollars, right? So for twelve thousand dollars, we're actually bringing people in who are moving, moving people in and out of our, our place. So I think it's a great spend and maybe we can look at it when we do open up the budget of actually raising that familiarization tour budget up.
All right. One, I would like to look at, thank you for the explanation. Uh, two, um, when this is reported back on, uh, I would like it reported back on even midway through the year even.
Yeah.
Uh, in department reports, uh, but I'd like to see the scorecard. I'd like to see.
Yeah.
Hey, we brought X amount of people, we brought X amount of people from this company. They, I know Brian's recused Navtech for this. They went to Navtech, they went to Subway. I mean.
Yeah. I have a big giant color coded spreadsheet, so.
Yeah, no, Mike, that's actually, oh, sorry. That's actually a really good point that you brought up. Last year, um, we did a, um, we did a fam tour for a German out there who, um, you know, checked out some of the four wheel drive trails out here. Um, that report actually from the state never made it back to me. I believe it was something like, he had like a hundred and fifty thousand hits on this video that he produced for me. And we never knew about it. We were never able to capitalize on it. So it is important, you know, to have that report coming back, especially to the operators who operated it so they can go, oh, great, look, this actually did get, get some bang for my buck.
Perfect. Go ahead, Mel.
I would like to move to approve the budget line item.
I would like to move to approve the budget line item for familiarization at the amount of twelve thousand dollars per year.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCandless and seconded by Commissioner Dean. Um, if there's no other discussion, I just have one comment or request, and I'm wondering, is your department head out of town? Or why is he not available for some of these hard questions?
Yeah, well, it was more of a mentor-mentee situation, I wanted to do it by myself, but I can bring him next time.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough, can answer the hard questions.
Yeah, all right, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously with one extension. Brian, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And you did a very good job. Thank you for stepping up and taking a challenge.
Good job.
All right, so we are gonna go on to seven, the Visa Destination Insights VDI contract with Grand County.
Hello.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I I apologize that I can't be there today, I'm very sick and didn't want to share it with you all. Um.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, of course. Um, so before you today is a contract to essentially renew our Visa Destination Insights program. Um, some of you who have been a part of the travel and tourism industry for a while may have received this data before, it was colloquially called Visa View for a while. It's been called Visa Destination Insights for a while, but you know, they know what's going on when you refer to them either way. Um, this is credit card spend data, it provides us wonderful insights on what people are spending on when they're in town, as well as their um origin market, and that's not just domestic, but also international. Um, as I wrote in the background of my item, the information that we have through September twenty twenty-four is available on our public dashboard. Should we choose to renew it for the uh fiscal year, we will have all that data backfilled, so we would then get October, November, December, January, and all that. Um, I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have on this. Um, I'll just say that this uh dataset is um sort of considered an industry standard and um, I don't, I think that there were some changes on Visa's end, and I'm not really sure why we didn't renew it on time, but this is a pretty important dataset that we want to continue to leverage.
Hey, anybody with any questions? Mary?
I move to approve the data service contract with Visa Destinations Insight VDI for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This is incredible, important data that we need to keep.
I'll second that, unless, Mike, is that what you were doing?
I had a question, and then we'll follow up secondary.
All right, motion by Commissioner McGann.
He doesn't feel very good.
Second by Commissioner Dean, further discussion, Mike, start us off.
Is this on par with uh last year's uh cost uh from VDI?
Um, Mike, uh by that, do you mean, is this what it's gonna cost for the next fiscal year contract?
Uh, is this the same as last year's contract?
Yes, it is, um, it is, that's correct.
Okay. Glad to see something go up.
All right, Brian, go ahead. So I I got a couple of questions, so I I followed this quite a bit, um. And correct me if I'm wrong, so the Visa View was originally connected to our Symphony program, is that correct?
It's.
Program then was supposed to immediately update our dashboard.
Yes, so Symphony uh is a data ingestion service that um aggregates a bunch of different indicators. Visa Destination Insights is one of them, and Symphony um still is connected to Visa, it's just currently not active, but they still have all our historic data, and when you go to our county's page and look at our public dashboard, that dashboard is created and administered by Symphony.
So when this first started, I believe it was back in twenty twenty-three, there was talk that we would have access to this data, the community would have access to this data. And um as of today, we still don't have access to this data, um, you know, through this dashboard. Um, is this data that we have any different than the data that's provided on the state's page?
Um, well, I I need a, I I want to understand what you mean by that, by that first comment. My my understanding is that the data being on that dashboard makes it publicly available, so is there um a level of availability that you think is missing?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to look at February of twenty twenty-two.
Um, is that not available through the dashboard?
Yeah, it's it's not available on the dashboard, so that that would be my question right there is, you know, where is the um, you know, the the dashboard, I I believe it was originally set up that the dashboard would, you know, we would be able to do comparisons and um to be able to look at it that way. So I'm just wondering, is is there been any look into enhancing the dashboard that we have on the site, or are we just continuing on with the Visa View? And if so, then where where uh um how is the public or the businesses, are they able to access that that historical data right there? So.
Uh, well, I've been putting in um a good amount of work on uh creating a more comprehensive uh public dashboard and actually have a call with Symphony this week to kind of go over the finished product, and then it's gonna go before the travel council board and hopefully be live March first, but um in the meantime, Brian, I um I'm able to see February twenty twenty-two data on our public dashboard, a- and I will say that one of the reasons I've been working on it is because I think our public dashboard could be a lot better, but the data is there. Um, what you have to do is in the top left corner, um, when it says report type and as of, you change the filters. Um, and February twenty twenty-two data is there. Um, and let's see here, yeah, i- it's it's there in just about all the ways I'd expect it to be. Um, but I'm glad to work with you if you think that the data is not visualized well, or um if it needs to be clearer.
And Ben, just so you know, um, Ben Fredergill is now with us and he's waiting to speak, so I'll I'll let him open it up for us a little bit also.
Cool, thanks, guys. Appreciate Ally coming in, um, I was trying to get on Zoom, you guys weren't letting me in, so I was sitting right across the way. So.
Jeez, quit.
I think, I think you saw, so let me just point out. One is, these items are being put forth because we've been respectful and we haven't been spending money because our budget's been in flux or on hold or hasn't been hold up.
Thank you.
These are all standard items that were in the Budget Advisory Board, they were shown on the list, and they are all of the any, and the previous ones that Ally talked about, we're all in the TCAP letter, so those have been through TCAP. Those are standard operating, I mean, if we're, we're literally in here, right, the commission using your valuable time to talk about a two hundred and ninety-five dollar um email tool, uh, we're just trying to get the word out. The fam tours, there's a reason it's not a bigger number, we have partners that want to partner, we have the state to partner. Quite frankly, in the budgeting of that, we're trying to be reasonable and say, can we spend that budget and do it right? So there's a very strong fam um piece, we're we're participating with UOT on sales missions. This particular one, this is part of the standard data bundle, it goes through Love. Um, without going down into the deep detail, a lot of this data, we are not allowed to share publicly, so there's a lot of stuff in the destination data that we have to repurpose, that's by contract, we'd be in a lot of trouble, we'd get sued if we shared it. I'm not so sure on the Visa View, the main function of the Visa piece is that that tells us who the non-domestic travelers are, that gives us a window into who's our international travel, so it's basically a blocking and tackling tool that we need. Trying to get this stuff through so we can get it in our budget and get it get it moving, because we're a month into the year, that's why we're here.
Got it, and then just a follow-up question on that, Ben, is you mentioned the contracts. So when I looked at it in twenty twenty-three, we directly took the contract out with Visa View, and then in twenty twenty-four, it was part of Love's communication package, right, and now in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that, and I.
And so I'm just, I, and 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 I I understand what you're saying, like this should not become in front of the commission, but but when it does come in front of me, I just use it the question.
Questions, because I was asking the same questions a year ago.
Yeah.
So, um, on all these tools, and we'll be in probably next, in the next meeting to amend our Love contract. Originally, some of that was in the Love contract, it was presented that there was part of the COAT was paying for it, or that they were doing the reporting. Um, that they were bundling and doing the reporting. There are certain parts of that data piece that our previous team, um, for whatever reason, they did not get traction with. So there was a deliverable on our side where we were failing. There's also a rigor that we're holding Love to, and some of their data pieces, I have not been perfectly happy with that. But um it's important for us to have a dashboard that we can measure internally, that we can show you things like, what we'll show you at the next TCAP, and we'll probably be showing you in our next report, is that we can take this data and we can piece it and say, here's here's national park visitation, here's a destination report that you can do a, we can do multiplier, just like the national park says there's two point four people or whatever number they use to come in, we'll say two to three people in a hotel room. Uh, because we'll see the 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 bookings, and we'll do the same thing on the short-term rentals. Now, the short-term rentals is a very tough one, because a short-term rental may have one to twenty people in it, but the only measurement is the booker, so there's one person, so there's another estimation number on there. Well, we just need these tools to be able to put together this data, so that's why we're here.
Yeah, no, I I agree with the tools, and it's not that I'm disagreeing with the tools, I'm just wondering. So in twenty twenty-four, we had a contract with Love to have those services provided, yet Ben just stated that the services stopped in September of last year.
Okay, we'll go.
That's what, that's what my question comes in, is it feels like we already paid for twenty twenty-four, that we're back, we're back sp- back spending right now for twenty twenty-five. And I'm just, that's where I'm trying to get lost.
Make sure we're not, that that's not a problem, and it goes through, we have, I know that end of life on Symphony, I believe, is in June. So we'll be looking to pull that, either if there's a value add with Love or a better deal, we'll do that, or with any other uh agency of record. Otherwise, we want to start owning this stuff and working it a lot harder. A lot of that, too, is is looking, we had redundancy in tools, so there there was a ton of stuff that was signed up for that we're we're trying to delete, I mean, we don't need three different ways to measure something, but we need to know that we have a tool that can measure something, so things like geo-fences and stuff, we're not, we we've never been happy with the geo-fence. Um, and so in June, that will, that will be up for a weekend, so you guys will be making that decision, but this one is just trying to keep it consistent, we don't lose it, we don't lose the data. I'm sorry, Ben, for jumping in on.
Yeah, no, I think it's good, um, is there anybody else that has questions?
Note, I mean, it's it's hard for all the, I think, for all the commissioners to track all the different contracts that exist at any point, I mean, we hear about these things for, I think, about five minutes, and to track all the different contracts from all the different entities, I think you almost need a flow chart to follow all the different departments, I mean, I can't remember all of them, so I think uh that's just one thing from being in, even with me reviewing them, I think there is some um s- some difficulty in tracking some of these tools, so I I just note that from being on this end of it, where I I work a little bit more with it than some of the commissioners do in certain capacities, I could see why it could it could get confusing.
I will agree wholeheartedly in coming in, taking over that department, finding out what all these different contracts were and what they did. Completely agree. Like I say, this is one of those, if if our budget had been moved over, that would have been, it it's in the um pre-approved list, so we're just now, we're just trying to say, hey, we're into February, let's take these piece by piece, we need to get them going.
Yeah, and we appreciate you bringing them in here, it gives us an opportunity, and I know that there's until we get the budget all straightened out, there's gonna be some of that, but I I think that we're appreciative that they come before us and that we get a chance to look at them, so. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the data services contract with Visa Visa Destination Insights VDI for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that was.
I thought we already had that.
Mary, mercy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that it got long. Yeah, my apologies.
No, thank you, I should have asked you, because I would, yeah.
All right, so we had a motion by Commissioner McGann and seconded.
Trish, Trish.
Long second. By Commissioner Dean.
There we go.
Okay, well, I forgot.
Well, that's, that's along my memory.
Thank you, so um if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Could I say one thing? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want to say something, Ben? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm I'm so sorry, I I Zoom delays, um, I just want to say.
Ben, let me finish my vote here, but that passed unanimously with the commission, and so yes, please. Well, we had six up and in. All right, so it passed unanimously, now you can give us the comments, sorry for overriding you there.
No, no, my apologies for overriding you. Um, well, I just wanted to say uh for the commission and for anyone who's listening that um I'm working very hard on making our data reporting services better. Um, they currently exist in a, I think, B-plus state, uh, but it's gonna be an A soon, but I I welcome folks if they're ever uh curious or confused or don't know how to access data uh to please reach out to me, because that's what our office exists for, and we're more than glad to help with you finding those answers.
Thanks, Ben, thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben and Ben, and I'll just make a note on that real quick, that up at the Capitol, there is a new room in the Capitol building, and it's called the Transparent Utah Room. And pretty much any data that you want on any county anywhere in the state is available up there, and it might be something that you guys would have access to or want access to as well, Ben.
I'll have to check it out, thank you, Bill.
It's pretty incredible dashboard, I mean, they have a computer there, you can just walk in and manipulate it and look at anything that you want, you have full access for any citizen, so. Just recommend that, all right, so I will move on. Um, we will move back. It's citizens to be heard time, we missed it, it's six oh five. Do we have anybody in the commission room, chambers here that would like to speak, citizens to be heard? Anybody online? Nobody online, once again, anybody in the room? Nope. All right, so we will move backwards to Cora's item. And um we'll let you come up and present that, thank you, Cora, and that is, I believe, item number four.
Cora, hi Bryce.
Oh, right, Bryce as well, thank you.
Extra, extra technical expertise.
Thank you. Um, so this is a request for proposal, RFP, for the LiDAR acquisition using Utah Local Disaster Recovery Restricted Account. LiDAR funding from the state, that is a mouthful.
It is, but you got it.
Thank you, well, I'm reading, so I didn't memorize it. All right, take it away.
Yes, so my name is Cora Phillips, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the county. Following the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four severe storm and flood event, I declared an emergency. Through that declaration process, that opened us up to the Local Disaster Recovery Restricted Account Funds through the state. Um, very advantageous, because we did not meet the threshold for a federal declaration, this is something that happens quite often in our country. So uh with the funds, we hope to obtain LiDAR data, so if you're not familiar, um a plane will fly over or a drone and be able to get really the um topographic information. With that information, we can see how the creek has changed and that like it's cutting or uh any type of movement, vertical or lateral. To see if that risk has changed for adjacent property, that's one thing that we're really looking to do. Uh, the last flood risk map, the flight was done in two thousand eighteen. Of course, those of you that have been here for a while, know that we had the huge flood event in twenty twenty-two. We had spring runoff twenty twenty-three and three very large storm events in twenty twenty-four, so it wasn't just the August twenty-third or event. All of those events have greatly impacted Mill Creek, Pappy, Mill Creek watershed as a whole. So this LiDAR acquisition, data acquisition will really help us look at that. Additionally, it will support many other projects to include the update to our Storm Drain Master Plan, as well as looking at fire fuels mitigation efforts and prioritizing that. Additionally, a separate project that I'm working on for the Comprehensive Flood Warning System, this data will be able to be plugged into that combined with weather and weather radar and look at the immediate impacts to an area, so instead of a flood watch. Combined with weather, weather radar and look at the immediate impacts to an area. So instead of a flood watch that. Compensates all of Grand County, we'll be able to have that honed in to go at the city. Really changing the game, really elevating my ability to do my job well. With more accuracy.
Yeah, thank you. And um, I, I'll start off real quick though. I see a huge value in this myself and. The fact that it needs to be updated on a fairly regular basis. Maybe not so much somewhere where they don't have the flooding as we do, but there, there's huge value for not just yourself, but other departments here as well. Um, Bill Hulse, the flood plane manager, the zoning administrator, there's, there's a huge value in this. And so I didn't. Mean to override anybody. Brian, start us off.
I move to approve the Grand County request for proposal for LiDAR acquisition and posting on public notice sites.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Martinez, seconded by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion? Michael.
I just want to, the public to know, uh, it is a decent amount of. Uh, twenty five percent in kind match, uh, totaling on this. Uh, LiDAR is accurate to within inches. Uh. This is very precise and very good information, so. Not a lot of bigger bang for the buck here.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate Cora, you taking the time to walk me through this and play devil's advocate through this whole thing. Um, you know, it seems like. You know, you know, I was a little bit skeptical at first and, and I think this is a really fantastic program that you got going on. And it does seem like it's gonna set us up for some future grant funds as well. So it's not just, it's not just that we're looking at what we're gonna get right now, but it's also what we could be looking for in the future. So this is a fantastic work.
Anybody else? Alright, we have a motion. Let's call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimous. Good job, Cora. Thank you. Thank you, Bryce. The backup? The motion in second.
Motion, second.
Martinez, McGann convo. Yeah, good. We are on to number eight, the ordinance to repeal and replace section eight point one six. Special events of the general ordinances. Let's, Commissioner McCurdy take this one forward.
I'm not gonna speak long on this. Uh, we did workshop. I feel that we really came to the middle. Uh, from some differing viewpoints and tackled a lot of points that I thought were important in our special events award.
Yeah, I'd second, I'd second that too. I think, I, I think workshopping it was the way to go. It was a super productive workshop. Appreciate everyone's perspective on it. Um, and I, I hope this continues to keep it smooth. I think it has been smooth for the, for the. Last year and obviously today went really well. So uh, yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of it. And on that note, I would uh, move to approve uh. The uh, move to approve ordinance eight point six, special events of the. General ordinances to repeal and replace. Sorry, there's a blank there. Move to approve the ordinance to repeal and replace chapter eight point one six, special events of the Grand County General Ordinances.
Motion by Commissioner Adler. Do I have a second?
Just, just noting for everyone, the ordinances are blank, so it's just a blank space.
That threw me, sorry. Okay, yeah, great.
Second by Commissioner McCandless. Alright, any further discussion?
I just note for everyone, you guys already know, it's in your packet. The red line's in there. It's actually green lined, but it's there. It's consistent with the workshop changes. And Chrissy Offine worked a ton with Commissioner McCurdy, and so she deserves a shout out for her, for her work on this.
Thank you for that, for sure. Alright, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Alright, that passes um, six with one absent. Moving forward. We are up to the volunteer appointment to the Grand County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board, E O A B.
So the um, do you want me to? I'm listed as the person.
Yeah, if you wanna start us off, Melody, please.
Okay, so the Grand County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board received seven applications for four open vacancies. Um, it's actually three open vacancies and then one, um. One is going to be replacing a spot that had resigned. And so that is going to, um, so three of the spots will be, the terms will be ending December thirty first of twenty twenty eight and then. One of the spots will be ending on December thirty first of twenty twenty seven. And I don't think that we clarified that during the meeting. Um, I noticed that today when I was reviewing information. So we're just going to have to select the individual. That's going to be in that vacant spot with remaining term on there. And so they um. They have their recommendation for Chris Wilson, Melissa Jeffers, um, Jen Sadoff, and Jen is. Who they recommended for the workforce development rep and then Aaron Lindberg and. Um, Chris and Aaron would be filling the private sector. And then there's the county public that's open that Melissa is currently listed as.
Okay, um, we'll start off with Jacques and go to Mary.
Great, um, I, let's see, these were all unanimous recommendations. And I think uh, this is one of our most engaged and effective boards, so I would go ahead and move to approve. Uh, the appointments of Chris Wilson, Melissa, Melissa Jeffers, Jennifer Sadoff and Erin Lindberg. Uh, to the Grand County Economic Opportunity Advisory Board.
You'll need to caveat who's on the shorter of the terms.
Oh, okay, was that, was that not passed through? Okay. Um, so I would, and I believe Chris and Melissa are running for reelection, so I would move to approve. Uh, Chris Wilson and Melissa Jeffers for the longer terms ending on, um.
You need three longer terms.
Okay, so the three longer terms would be, and, and Jennifer Sadoff, yeah. And then for Erin Lindberg to take over the shorter term.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Hadeen. Further discussion? Brian?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. Um, I move to approve Chris Wilson and Brittany Milton as the private sector reps. With Melissa Jeffers as the public sector rep, um, with the terms expiring twelve thirty one twenty eight. Um, I further appoint Erin Lindberg to the private or to the vacant private sector uh, position expiring twelve thirty one twenty twenty seven. Um, and then I would move to move Ashley Cornblatt to the workforce services rep.
And discussion.
Can you repeat that?
Yep, so I moved to approve Chris Wilson and Brittany Milton to the private sector reps and Melissa Jeffers as public. Sector reps with terms expiring twelve thirty one twenty twenty eight. Further, I appoint Erin Lindberg to the vacant private sector position expiring twelve, uh, thirty one twenty twenty seven. And then would move Ashley Cornblatt as our elected workforce services rep.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy with comment, but then we'll go to Jacques.
You first, you first.
No, go ahead, Mike.
My thoughts on this is uh. Jen, uh, Jennifer Sadoff, uh, even in, in commission or in. Uh, interview, really uh. Not that she was a good fit, it's, she's on a lot of boards and she recognizes that too, and her time constraints are. She's willing to take that, uh, that information back and work harder.
Yeah, so wasn't, so Jen was approved to be the workforce services rep, do I have that right?
Correct.
So Ashley is, is private. She was elected as the.
Correct.
So ha- I, I don't, I don't think Ashley qualifies as the workforce services. She's not.
So I actually spoke with Colette today and so this is a box that we need to check. We are free to move someone from private over to workforce services and I, I, and speaking with Colette. Um, that is, that the um, either her, um, Ashley Cornblatt or Brittany Milton would fit that. By serving on the chamber board. So we would still fulfill that uh, position right there.
Just by, cause the chamber also, uh, I know the spot is vacant, the chamber director has a spot on this board. And I would assume that the chamber director is the one that would be able to fill that workforce services spot and not just a citizen who happens to be on the chamber.
No, that's, that is not correct from what my conversation with Colette.
Is there a way that we could get some clarification on that?
You're gonna have to run that by me, cause I got, I got lost with all the names flying around. So like, so. If the board, so if the board requires a certain, a certain breakdown of certain individuals, then they have to, you have to have the board that comprises of that. I'm trying to follow the bylaws on that board. So if you give me a moment, I can look through it. But I, on our website, I will note on our website, how we've listed it out is we've listed out with the office being kind of a. Voting private sector representative. So how, how it's broken down now, it lists the individual plus the office they're holding with the designation. Of the rule. So, but if you'll bear with me, I can pull up the statute, whatever it requires, but I, I don't know. I, I, yeah.
So Brian, can I ask, do you mind if I ask you a question? Why, so why the amendment? Why the modification? Why weren't you happy? I mean, again, uh, reading this, it said the board voted unanimously to make these recommendations. So you're going against their, their recommendation?
I am correct, yes.
And why is that?
Um, so for a couple of reasons. Um, so first off is, is you know, one of our, our duties, I think here as the commission is to make sure that we have a balanced board. Right, a diverse board. Um, right now, I'm not seeing that. I think one of the problems and one of the reasons that we're actually in trouble with the state right now. Over this is because of our lack of diversity. Um, also further in my conversation. Um, she has, she is not impressed with our economic development board as it stands right now. Um, she is impressed, however, with our county administrator and the work that he's been doing to try to further this along, um, as we've been moving. This is Colette, that I, that I talked with today. Um, you know, and the grace that she's given us right now will not be repeated. Um, I'd really like to see some more diversity and the people that I recommended, I mean, I took, I took a hard thought on it, right? Um, I'm not doing this for any type of political reasons. Um, I mean, I chose Aaron Lindberg. Um, and, and, and Aaron's fantastic, but you know, he just razzed us in the paper, you know? Um, so I mean, I'm, I'm actually looking for people who are critical of us. Uh, I think Brittany Milton also would be someone who would, who would stand up, you know, to any kind of problems that we have. You have two very strong voices right there. And I think that's a lot of strength. I also looked at uh, uh, Melissa Jeffers. And while, while I was watching through their interviews, she was the one person I thought that really had some unique ideas. Right? Not like, let's not go with the flow. She had this great idea about, let's, maybe we could use some of this money for benefit systems for people here. In, in Grand County. I was like, wow, that's really good. And then Chris Wilson, you know, I've watched him through this board and he seems, seems like he's like the workhorse. Right? And he's out there. And I think that that was, that, that's where I came out with this recommendation right here.
I appreciate that. Um, I will state in the four years since I've been on the commission, I think we've gone against board recommendations twice in four years. So now you guys are in month, this will be the third time you'll go against the board's recommendations. I've just. Kind of stating facts. I just want you to know that I want, want the general public to understand that these are advisory boards of volunteer citizens. And they are putting forth their recommendations. And when the county commission goes against their recommendations. I think it's, it shows a, a fairly large lack of respect. That's, I'll leave it there. And again, one of the, you know, the one time that I went against board recommendations, it was because there was not clarity on Utah code. As to how they made those recommendations. And that's why I specifically went against that board.
Trish, you just went against the board recommendation for the travel council, just the other meeting. So let's add one more to that count right there. And second, right, if we have homogenous boards, right, we're going.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we have.
I, I, I think that we have homogenous boards. And if you have a homogenous board, right?
Alright, I'm, I'm gonna go to Jacques and then I'm gonna make a comment and we'll go to Mary and then Mike.
Uh, I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering about the diversity aspect of this. I think we, what we don't have is someone who's a major employer, which, which Jen is, which is what that. Workforce service is supposed to represent. Jen's the CEO of, of um. Either the first or second largest employer in the whole county. And um, as far as diversification goes, I think Brittany Milton's a small business owner. We've definitely got small business owners on the board. Um, and uh, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of talk lately about eliminating diversification plans from a lot of, a lot of quarter. But I, I think it's uh, interesting that bringing up diversity as one of these issues is, is uh, is, is coming from you guys. But at the same time, um, Jen's great. I've worked with Jen on other boards. She's fantastic. She brings a great. Perspective, also brings perspective from the largest employer in the county. Um, you spoke to some of the strengths of some of the other folks and I, I agree with you there. And uh, you said, this isn't political. This is the second uh, appointee that you've uh. Um, supported who, who you guys ran with, including Howard last week. So I would, I would. Say that uh, it, it appears that it is. It, 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 it certainly appears political to me and uh, that's, that's the perspective that I.
I don't think that there's a lack of political here and, and I would agree that there does have a political tone to it, Jacques. But um, Trish, on the groundwater. Conservancy and Gwissi Board, there are four times that you went against their recommendations. And I checked with them. That's just not off of my memory. I made a call. So I think we have to be careful when we start. Accusing other commissioners of doing something because it's a tool that has been used in the past. Regularly and.
I'll do my research on that. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to do my.
Alright, and then Mary, you were next, and I'm gonna go to Mike and back to Brian and we'll try and wrap this up.
Jen Sadoff is uh. Has, has, has the most employees in the community. And she has raised the amount of money that the uh, hospital uh, brings in by, I think. Huge amount, huge amount. I, I don't wanna. I did write it down. Let me see if I can find it. She raised it over the last twenty years. She raised. It by. Twenty million dollars, twenty million dollars in ten years. I, 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 I think sh- just by that, she demonstrates her understanding of economic development. And she has been a prove, a person who has proven that and she is the, you know, she is a large employer. I, I don't. I think it's incredibly, I, I mean, I've. I've gone, I've done this before. I've, I, I, I opposed uh, Howard. Because of the way I was treated when he was on the board before. I was treated very poorly. Go back and watch the meetings. So I had a pretty legitimate reason. I, I. Yeah, you can say it's not political. And I can respect that. But the public's going to see it as political. It's going to blow up. Because Brittany is a pretty uh, controversial figure in this community. I mean, she has her, her likes and her dislikes and, and people are all over the place and how they feel about Brittany. And you ran with her and I've run with, when I ran with Chris and Jay Lynn, I became very fond of them. I really liked him. I mean, it's, it's natural when you're running with somebody and you're kinda on the same ticket, you, you become friends. And. You know, they went through, I, I. I think that uh, to not go with the board's recommendation. A board that works hard, the board, a board who is committed. To what you say isn't political. Is going to appear political and I don't think that's a good, I don't think that's a good. Thing for our commission to look like, that we're going against a board. For an employee that has a lot less employees to represent a person who is the workforce person. And a person who you are friends with and you ran with. It's. It's going to appear political and I think it's a bad move. I think we need to vote, go with what the. Uh, Economic Opportunity Board suggested. I've seen no reason to change it.
Point taken, Mary. We'll go to Mike and Brian and then I'm gonna wrap up. And I also have something to add, actually.
Okay, sorry. To flip side of that coin, it seems very uh. It seems very political to not welcome diversity. I know that you ran her, against her. But I wish, this goes for all boards that we have, guys. Uh, I would want this, this. Outpouring of support and trying for spots of new members of our community, not continuing members, uh. Where it stands right now, uh, this helps. Where it stands right now, uh, this help point my uh view was. Where it is standing right now, I want to welcome. Newer voices. I I'm glad to have. Aaron stepping over, even though we were called out in the paper. I I very much understand that, but it's a differing view is not a bad view. So I. We spoke briefly about it uh before today, just trying to get a little information. And my. My thoughts are a little different, but I was happy to come to a grander compromise to get. The willingness on these boards. Uh, I I'm happy to see it. I'm happy to see so many people actually trying, so.
No, I agree.
Go ahead, Brian, and then I'll comment.
Do you wanna follow up?
Yeah, Steve, go ahead. Uh, yeah, so I'm just noting, so the bylaws are pulled from uh Utah Code annotated. Sixty-three N dash four dash eight oh three. And although the bylaws kind of flip the order of it. Um, we're looking at one A through uh C. It replicate replicate state code, which essentially says that we have to have. Um, individuals from particular offices, you know, ex officio members being. The area of chambers of commerce has to be one. Planning and zoning department one. Uh, nomination by Utah State University, Grand County Commission. Uh, non-voting member, op city elect. And then uh you have your additional private sector members and one public sector members. So the one one difficulty is you've got somebody from. The uh Moab Area Chamber of Commerce. So I I don't know. Yeah, I that's one thing that you have to clarify where you're gonna have. That's that's one of the positions based on the statute, based on our bylaws. So you have to have that uh individual sit in that position. So and then you've got the the balance.
All right, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna get to a couple of points that were made. Um, you know, I I I spoke to Jen as well over this as well and and did hear what she had to say. About what she does at the hospital and I'm very grateful of all the work that she's done at the hospital. She's fantastic in everything that she's done. So it was not, it has nothing to do with a take against Jen right there. Um, but one thing that we don't have is we don't have anybody who represents the insurance industry. And as a business owner, right, I know that I talk to my insurance agent quite often. Right? It's when we look at our cost as businesses, right? At least for me, I can tell you what my top costs are. My first one is gonna be salaries. My second one is gonna be food and food and fuel, right? And my third one is gonna be insurance costs. And I think that that's a very important um thing to be, uh, it's a very important voice to be hearing now. You know, is 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 what is happening in that market? How is it affecting things right now? Um, so I do think that 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 uh availability or the uh affordability issue on that is important. Another thing I want to mention is is uh going through that is the process. And 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 I do understand that the process of the hiring, or I'm sorry, of the selection. Um, was done by our bylaws, but I would like to kind of point out that I I don't think that it was really the fairest way to to operate. Um, we had members of the uh 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 basically of the selection committee asking questions and. And uh uh um asking questions and being involved inside of the uh discussion for the members. And you know, while it's when it's not a competitive process, I think that that's fine. Um, and I do understand that they are part of the board until they are re they're replaced. Um, but that same process happened in the travel council. And the travel council did not, did not have those members participating in the discussion. Or participating inside of the um. Inside of the selection process. Um, second off is during that, there was a recess for break. And usually when we have a recess, right, the discussion on the topic should stop. Um, but that they left their mics on when that when that happened. And they continued to discuss that, to discuss the uh selections of those committees as they kind of went on. Um, and I'd just like to see that if we move forward with the policy, that we kind of respect that that competitive process. You know, and that the when someone's reapplying for a board position, and it is a competitive position. That they're not part of the selection committee right there for that board replacement.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a comment and then I'll let you go, Trish. But I I wanna comment to the fact that we made the statement here that Brittany is controversial. And I wanna ask the question, who isn't? I would at the, and who isn't up here, right? I would imagine if. Andrew's paper hadn't gone to a nonprofit, my own personal. Controversy that's happened in this community would have driven their subscription rate up highly. They they lost out on a chance to make more money personally, but. I I wanna be careful. We don't wanna. Publicly speak about people in a way that's negative when. We fit that mold as well ourselves. And that's just the point I'm making. And then Trish, go ahead. And I think Ben would like to come up as well. So Ben, please.
I've got a really good one. Good point.
Okay, well, I I was in line and so I'm gonna go ahead and go Bill so that I was next. Um. And it actually speaks to that bill because a comment was made that I'm. I'm against this because she was my opponent in the election. That is not at all the case. That is not at all the case. I appreciate people that are willing to serve this community and to run for, that is, that was not fun. I'll tell you. Probably wasn't fun for her and it wasn't fun for me. So I have no beef with that individual. I I appreciate her investment into our local government. Um, I think, Brian, you making the point that she's an insurance agent. There is no way we're gonna satisfy every sector on a board. We can't. So. That comment to me is null and void. Again, my beef is honoring. The board's unanimous, I'm gonna make that clear once again, decision to bring this board. It's honoring our volunteer boards, period.
Thank you. Creative, creative, uh. Creative line. So section two, additional membership. Item B, the county body may also appoint additional members with experience. In economic development matters. Also may appoint additional. So I don't know if you guys are gonna read this super strictly. It had more. You can always do that. But I'm just pointing out that that's another caveat. I am, I will, I will admit, I'm slightly confused on who's wearing what hat. So I need it repeated back to me. I don't know if Gabe's got it down. Hat, but that's um one other point that would be helpful to reiterate uh what the membership would be. Okay.
Yeah, let's let Commissioner Martinez make that clarification and then we'll let Mr. Frederick be able to speak.
All right, so. I'm just gonna go short form here.
And go s- go slow, sweet. Can all keep up with you.
All right. I move to approve Chris Wilson. Brittany Melton to the private sector reps. And Melissa. Yeah.
Private sector.
Melissa Jeffers as public sector sector reps. With those with those terms expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. And then further appoint Aaron Lindberg to the vacant private sector position expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven. And then move to appoint Ashley Cornblatt to the workforce services rep.
I ask a clarifying question. Of course, why, why? Why do you have to move her from that position when there's a, there's a designated position for a voting member that is nominated by the Moab Area? Chamber of Commerce? Is that Ms. Cornblatt?
No, no, right now, right now, she's under as the private sector. So we would, but. In speaking with Colette, she would also, we are allowed to move her over to that workforce service rep.
What, what, and she's in the private position?
And she's in the private position.
Okay, that that clarifies it. I I had.
To move that to move that seat over.
Okay, Mr. Frederick, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no, I just wanna add one thing. And and this is a process piece. So. We were held up getting our rural county grant. Because James Dixon, head of the office, said our bylaws, we weren't, we weren't in the position we needed to be. So the vote that you guys did in December, which, you know, that was the one that had a lot of discussion with it. The reason that was important. Is that we could get that. Compliant immediately, that workforce piece and some others, because. We moved around a lot. So a lot of man hours went into getting compliant. On that bylaw. So that we would then qualify. We were notified that our grant was being issued. Um, we, we went and pointed out that there was an issue with the chamber. Um, and we were told, we we had a meeting. We've done all this in public. So this has all been done in publicly open. So if. Two concerns. One is the process. We we got the bylaws compliant. So. Being that we were held to a standard, I would just say be careful. Getting created with the bylaws because we. Did the exact opposite. We became compliant. Number two, we were notified that everything was in process, that even when we notified, I have a email that I timestamped. The minute I did it, that we found out that the chamber chair was leaving. We had a meeting and we were told that we could put the chamber piece in arrears and we could do anything, which is fine. You guys decide. We want you to decide. But somewhere in the process, we were never contacted back. So if. If someone's not happy with our board, they haven't told us that. We got our bylaws in place so we'd be compliant. I just want that in the public wing because we have done everything in public. So. Um, and and a- as was said. There was a, this was done in process. It took a lot of time. It is not easy finding these people to apply. So. Um, I would just, I would just encourage, um. You know, as you're moving forward with this, that know that that December bylaws piece was pretty important piece for us.
Thank you. And Stephen. Just just reiterating, it's in state statute that you can appoint additional members. So it's not. Anywhere within the realm of questionability and and share it. I'd like to see the commissioners move forward on this. It's really, you have a motion before the commission. You should make a determination. It's not public comment, period. Right.
So Jacques, and then we will um move this forward for a vote.
Okay, so uh ju- just to be clear, has, did it, did anyone tell Ashley she's moving?
So it's it's the designate, it's merely that you have to have that person on the board. The problem that I had originally was that I thought she was the chamber, uh, chamber of commerce person. And that's the person that we can't move because they're appointed. Our bylaws say that they're appointed.
And this, the second thing, Brian, did didn't, did you? I think you just said Brittany's on the chamber commerce, but as far as I know, she's not. You you said. You said Brittany and Ashley are on the chamber commerce and that.
Yeah, you know, I said that. Oh, maybe I missed out. I know Brittany is running for the chamber of commerce.
Okay, well, you said Brittany and I, anyway. Um, and uh, and and so we are. We're moving. Or you guys are proposing to move Ashley, even though she's the private citizen, but just simply because she's on the chamber of commerce. She.
Qualifies.
Qualifies as that position. And that's what Colette Cox told you. So that, that's, I mean, that seems like a little bit of hearsay. It would be nice to get a little. Better clarification on that. Is that right, Stephen?
I I haven't heard that directly. I haven't. I. It's not an item that I've anticipated being.
Right, right. I think Brian's the only one who who is sure of that from his conversations, but if.
You can read on our bylaws right there and see if if you disagree that it fits that qualification. But coming from her, she said that that is not a stretch with her being on the chamber of commerce.
Well, I think we can vote on it as it's presented. If there's these issues with the legality of it, the county attorney will. Bring that to our attention. But again, this is, this is a.
This is a board that has to have X number of people wearing X particular hats. If you satisfied those requirements, that's what you're looking for. What my concern was, you can't take a particular person that was. Again, I was assuming she was under the commit, uh, under the chamber of commerce. She's not. If you have people that meet the criteria, that's what we're looking for. Is that board meets those criterias. Some boards. Uh, and I I listened to their, I I listened to everybody speak. Some boards, you could have an individual that could fit multiple different categories. That is a possibility. Being in the private sector, like uh Jen Sadoff being in the private sector, could she wear the private sector hat? Uh, well, I guess the hospital's slightly different, but you could, you could, you could create an individual that has multiple elements of it. Every single one of them is a public sector individual. Uh, and for a public member of the community. So. I don't, I don't know that there's going to be a a challenge to it. I think it's gonna be a hard bar to me to challenge the commission. Choosing to allocate this in this way with you have, if you have those individuals can meet the criteria. So do I think this is a huge risk? Not particularly. But the individual would have forty-five days to challenge it. Yeah. It's chair's discretion. Do you guys have a motion before you guys? If there's a second, the discussion really should just be with the commissioners.
Yeah, I'm gonna choose to move on with it then. I'm ready to make a vote on the substitute motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner McCandless, please.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't spoke a lot just because I don't have a voice, but um. So I, you know, I was in this meeting and I watched it. And so I've been now, I've only. Been on the commission for less than a month and I've been to three meetings with this group. And so. I'm um really impressed with Melissa and Chris's work that they've done. And as I read the bylaws and I, and what's interesting is, and I also watched the December seventeenth meeting, when they changed the bylaws. And you had questions about it because you had said that you had spoke with Colette and you were interested why they were changing the bylaws. And if we could have just put um Ashley in the spot of the workforce. Um, then I don't know why we just didn't do that then and not go through the changes of it. But if she does fit in there as far as. Individuals who are engaged in business assistance and resource navigation and enterprises. Um, that is the specific wording as far as what fits this um. Workforce representative. And so I think Ashley's fine to fit in there. I know that Brittany's um. Applied to this board prior in twenty twenty-three and she applied now. She also ran for county commission. And I think that she deserves um a chance to to have a position in the county somewhere, you know, so I'm not opposed to. Brittany being in that spot. I do feel that it was unanimous vote um for for the four. That were chosen, but I also am um. Recognizing Jen's comment about, you know, there's a lot of great people. We had seven applicants. They were all amazing. And you know, and she's like, I'm not, you know, sold on this board. And so I think that I'm in favor of. You know, um, moving forward with the vote.
Thank you. I'll call for a vote on the substitute motion made by Commissioner. Martinez and I believe seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. So all in favor of the substitute motion. With passes for opposed? Oh, okay, my apology. Those opposed? All right, passes four to three with Commissioner Hedin, Commissioner Hadler and Commissioner McGann opposed. And.
What do we have to do with the first motion? Okay. And your consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, no.
Or design designation of zoning administrator.
Okay, so number ten designation of the zoning administrator.
May I make a a comment now you voted? Just to affirm the fact that the board has nominated a slate of. Potential members of the board. And we accept the decision that the commission has voted for. Um, I do believe that anybody who goes back and looks at the last meeting. Will see that the questions that were asked were quite asked according to the requirements of an open interview process. There were. Questions from at least one applicant that were answered. That didn't need to be answered. We gave that courtesy. And the fact that this uh change moves around some of the people on the. In their roles, in their respective roles. Also means that we lose the um. The perspectives of the, not only the largest private employer. But the employer that probably has the hardest job bringing the kind of employees they need uh to Moab. You've made the decision. We stand by that. Um, I do think that that will have some effect on how the board operates. Knowing that the recommendation has been uh changed. But we'll work forward.
Thank you, Horace. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Horace.
Move on to the zoning administrator. Appointment here and it sounds like it's changed a little bit midstream. Um, who do we want to present that? I'll do it. Be glad to do it. I know there was discussion that we would. Okay, there there was back and forth discussions whether to appoint Dan Stenta temporarily. Or possibly the admin and then it went admin. I think Dan's back to thinking that he's fine with being that appointee.
And. This is just until we hire.
Correct. And and I have no problem with that. And if there's anybody that wants to comment, Stevens, you can start us off.
It's it's critical that we have somebody in this role. If we don't have anybody in this role, it's gonna create a tear. Um, I've encouraged in in times past, Lisa Martin, when she was here and transitioned, it was very, very helpful to have um. The the planning uh director be a part of this process. There are so many projects. I think we're lucky to have Dan continue on. I think. I think it is the, it is the best pick, it is the best, best pick possible. Um, I, I do, you know, I, I think the longer that Dan can stay on, not that he wants to do this long term, uh, the, the more benefit and the more cohesion the county will have when it shifts to a new individual. Because finding a director is, is a very big ask and a very difficult position to go. So I, I would really encourage this.
Uh, go ahead, Trish.
I'm gonna make a motion. Go ahead, Quinn.
Sure, Dan, uh, you wanna weigh in before we make that motion on you?
While it talks. Um, I just am willing to serve at the county's commission's pleasure and however you think I'm best utilized.
We appreciate that very much, Dan. All right, Trish.
Um, and I'm not sure this will be perfect, but um I make a motion to designate Dan Stenta as the zoning administrator. Until, should I say, pro temp, okay, thank you.
Um, seconded by McCurdy, um, any further discussion on that? The only thing I would ask is do we need to make that effective on a certain date?
That's a good idea, to make it effective Friday. The day after the seventh, after this Friday. Well, yeah.
So let's just do it, make it Friday. Friday, so that would be the Friday, February seventh. Do you wanna at, make that part of your motion?
Um, as of, um, sorry, February seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
At five P M.
At five P M, thank you.
She gets her lock taken.
All right, um, let, let me, it's, so the motion by Commissioner Hadeen, seconded by McCurdy and then further discussion, Brian.
Yeah, just, just real quick, I just wanna bring up, I also think it kind of brings up that idea that, you know, maybe bringing on a uh planning consultant, like a contract planner, might be a good idea and something that we start looking into in this interim right now. Um, just someone, just someone to kind of help out writing some staff reports. Um, I know that we have a new employee that's gonna be coming inside of the planning department, that's got a lot of education, right? This might be her first job as an actual planner, um, to be able to provide some of that mentorship, some things like that. Um, I do know that there's some firms out there and I think it would be great for us to go ahead and at least further investigate that, um, to see if we can find a contract planner.
Yeah.
Sure, and Quinn will make some comments on that.
I do know that right now Dan Stenta is working on our A R request for proposals for some contract engineering services and we're going to include in that our A R planning services as needed.
That would be awesome.
Thank you, Quinn.
Yeah, and then further, you know, I mean, when it's, you know, when we do have that new director in and they're ready to go, uh, we could also use that as um for, you know, special projects that we have and any kind of questions that kind of come up during, during the planning process.
Anybody else? All right, motion by Commissioner Hadeen, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy. All those in favor of the motion as Trish presented? Passes unanimously, thank you, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Oh, oh, no minutes. So, okay, thank you. So. Up here, thank you, sir. All right, so ratification of the bill report, see, how do you make this work, sir? Okay, I've got it here. All right, thank you, so we have a total. We've got a total bills of a million thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-nine cents with a total payroll of three hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents with a total bills and payroll of a million three hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. And then we will find the rest of them here.
It's on your paper.
Okay, thank you. So we've got the First Amendment to the Independent Contractor Agreement with Rick's Glass and Kevin Bowden Construction for the replacement of the lobby doors at the old Spanish Trail Arena. We've got ratification of the Single Event Local Consent for Moab Run on the Rocks. Local consent for a, excuse me, a hotel liquor license, Spring Hill Suites by Marriott and the volunteer appointment to the library board. Two appointments. Okay, so I've just shown it as a one, but that's fine, all right.
So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
All right, sec-, motion by Commissioner McCandless, seconded by Commissioner McCurdy, any discussion on the consent? No discussion, right?
Generally, you just call for anybody has any objections from the consent agenda, uh, consent agenda, yeah.
Right, all right, thank you, so all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And we move on to our discussion items, starting with the discussion on H B two sixty-seven.
Yeah, and I, I guess I just have a couple of questions from maybe the legislative subcommittee. So you guys are meeting once a week, is that correct?
Yeah, Monday at nine thirty.
Monday at nine thirty, and then you go through anything that's concerning to you or to the county and then decide collectively. Like, that's, you, you support it, you oppose it, I'm just, if you could kind of give me kind of.
We don't decide at that point if we oppose it. Or support it, we push all of the information that we want up to Cody, our lobbyist.
Okay, great.
And then while we're on the hill, we either work on those depending on how they affect the county.
Right, okay, I know, and I'm just, I'm just, you know, just in the past, when I first came on the commission and I think it was prior to when Bill and Mike were on the commission, we, we actually kind of went through bills and that we, that would, we knew would affect us and we were actually voting on them. So when I heard Brian, you say our support, I was a little concerned, like, who's our? You know what I mean, like, is it the commission, I, you know, that, that's a, in, you know, you're like, my support, yeah, so, but you did use our, so I'm kind of picking on you. But um, and I appreciate the U A C bill tracker where we can be on those meetings, we can be making votes and I appreciate that prop, of that process. Um, this was just something that was brought to me by multiple citizens, um, very concerned about this. And so I just, and I know I talked to Cody and, and talked to you and just wanted to make sure that we are um, we are not supporting this bill at this, at this time, those that are opposed to it are the Utah Education Association, Public Safety Unions of Utah and U A C. And so I would assume will follow suit. To me, um, and I said this in my email to you all, I said, this isn't about lining my pockets, I wanna state that I've been a teacher, I, I'm a teacher, I've been a teacher since nineteen ninety-one. It's not really the point of it, it's more the concerns that we have, that I have with education within our county. And I wanna kind of just give you a couple of quick statistics. Um, Utah student, student to teacher ratio is the highest in the nation. Um, teachers in Utah earn between thirteen to thirty-four percent less than other workers with it, within other occupations that have a bachelor's degree. Okay, so they're already coming to the table behind. And teacher vacancies and retention and recruitment is very difficult. Grand is near the top, we're sixth in the state um to, in which we are having a hard time recruiting and retaining teachers. And currently twenty, and this is all out of a, a report by the University of Utah, sorry, I should state that, that I'm not just randomly coming up with these numbers. And that twenty-two point three percent of our teachers are basically unqualified, you know? We can't find qualified teachers with the appropriate um certificates, we're filling those, we're backfilling them somehow. So, you know, this is just one more hit to educators and other public service, the public service sector. And I hope that we collectively as a county will oppose it. I think that's it.
And I'd like to give just a little bit of an update because I have specifically discussed this with different legislators with um Senator Colomore, who is running the bill. And I've discussed it and had conversations with multiple other senators, including Senator Rebe, who is, I think, on some school. I, I'm not totally sure where she comes from there, but she's got a lot of background with the school departments and stuff. And so as it stands now, I, the last thing I was told is that the unions are going to go neutral on it after substitute one came out. Now, I don't know that that's happened because I'm not following the press releases and.
Right, any, I didn't see much today.
Substitute one, here it is.
So substitute one has come out, which has um possibly appeased them, I don't wanna say that it has because I haven't honestly seen that.
Right.
I will say that the bill tracker is extremely important and commissioners should be on that when the, on the Thursday mornings at ten with U A C. And I find far more value in working on these issues face to face. There's plenty of opportunity for all commissioners to be at the Capitol.
I understand, and I, and I respect that bill and, and I, and I, I have a, I have a really hard time because I'm a teacher. And so it's really hard for me to get away, but I do respect that that's a part of my job. And I need to make it a priority, um, and I'm trying, it's just very hard, you know?
And, and I'm not calling you out, I, I'm just saying there's value in working with those people face to face over, um, and do we wanna do a resolution and be non-supportive of this as it originally stands? I, I, I'm, either way, whatever you wanna do, but what I'm saying is the effect is that we can have as commissioners is up there in a relationship building that with them. So I've had my spiel, I'll let Mike go and I.
We just don't mind, so. No, uh, beating a dead horse here. Uh, this is why my voice is missing, uh, going up and trying to talk to everyone, uh, that face to face interaction. Uh, this is not you, this is all of us. Uh, make it happen. Uh, if you have something, uh, if you have views on something, make them know the U A C, make them know, in voting.
That's why I'm here.
Make it, yeah, I was like, make it known and go talk.
But yeah, I gotta go teach.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and just further, you know, the, the article that I read this morning um was that um, right now the, the unions are basically looking to try to figure it out. They haven't had enough time to look at this um substitute yet, to decide if this is something that's good for them or bad for them. So right now, it's kind of just, it's all in flux.
That's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and, and as well, just to note, you know, like, I, I know that Mary was a teacher, you know, my mom was a teacher as well, you know, retired school teacher. So I think that there's enough people here that really care for our, our teaching community.
I, I do believe, don't quote me, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure U A C has an opposed.
They, they have it opposed.
I, I told it up on the tracker.
And they had it opposed prior to your issue going out. So as soon as, because I was on that um Policy Steering Committee, the, the day that they talked about that, and I'm a hundred percent for education a- as well. And so I, I already, we had already discussed it and I already had put, been put down for opposition and then your email went out. So in my mind, I was like, well, we've already kind of done, I guess, in my opinion, I was like, well, I've kind of done my job as far as opposing this with um U A C and U A C. Accepting that, because not only, in those policy steering committees, we um as individual commissioners or um say what we want or, you know, there's a motion put forth and then it goes back to the U I, U A C um staff. And then they, and they come back and, and allow, so of course I watch to see if they take the recommendation of the policy steering committee. So that's been fun for me to, to do that, so that's, it's new for me. But um, so I, I, that's why I was like, well, it's already been, and, and we'll continue to watch it and um, and it's continued to be talked about. And I'm, you know, I follow the U E A really uh closely as well. So I think it's great to bring it to all of our attention and there's, there's quite a few bills out there besides this one.
I'm gonna go to Steven, then Brian, then Mary.
I just, I'd just like to thank uh Commissioners Hadler, uh, McCandless and Winfield and uh Mark. I mean, it's, it's been really awesome to be able to get the opportunity to talk about these bills when, when we meet. I've only been able to attend one of them and having this happen, um, we haven't done this in years past, at least I've, I've not been a part of it. Um, but now, because when I, when I came on, I asked if this committee was functioning and I was told it was defunct. And so having.
Was functional last year.
Um.
It was, it was informal.
But it worked.
But my, my, my office was listed as one of the participants and I never formally or informally got invited to any meeting. Um, and that's, and I reached out to you, Commissioner Hadler, early on about it, and you said it was uh defunct. But that aside, I think it's really important that we pick up these bills, talk about them, get a, get a stance out. Because Grand County often is the target for undesired attention and if you go up and you get to meet these folks, you at least make it harder for them to pass legislation targeted at Grand County, so that's my two cents.
Right, go ahead.
Yeah, and then just on further, one of the things that I've learned is, you know, at that U A C, you know, there's, each commissioner gets a vote, right? So I mean, it's, it's, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying like, this is one of the things that I've learned, I think, not, not pointing at you, Trish. Um, you know, and so we really have a lot of power here, being a seven, a seven uh, commission board, right? Like, we have seven votes when we're out there opposing, so anybody who's on during that.
I mean, there's a vote.
Yeah, there's one as well, so.
And, and our sheriff too, I would imagine, yeah.
Chris Kaufman.
Chris Kaufman, did you wanna make comments?
Oh, I was just gonna say, if, if there is a, something that we really wanna make an official statement, it is powerful. I know when uh we, I was working with uh Steve on the Utah Raptor, we wrote a resolution so that when he went to the committee, he was able to say Grand County said, you know.
Representative Eliason, we're talking about.
And it was very, very helpful, it was very helpful. So if there is, uh, you know, I, I don't, you know, a letter or, or a um resolution or something that can be read in committee by one of us is, is pretty powerful. So if in future, you know, if we come up with a bill that we wanna really support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is easier, or bill that we really wanna oppose, I, I think it's worth uh being able to make something official.
And, and just thanks for kind of letting me bounce through.
Thank you, so then we can move forward to the discussion around the purchasing policy.
Yeah, so I, I was the one who asked to put this on right here. And um, you know, I, I went through and I looked through our uh, our purchasing policy and I think that we had one that was approved in twenty twenty-four. And I didn't see anything that had a preference given to local vendors. Um, you know, and I think that, and I think that that's something that we should definitely have in there. Um, there's a couple of ways I think that we could, we could kind of skin this cap, right? One is, you know, just our basically under five thousand, you know, one is that under five thousand threshold, right? You know, preference should be given to our local vendors. Because, you know, when we give, when we give the money into our community, it stays here in our community. Um, you know, when we go out and we shop on Amazon, I mean, that money has left our community. Um, and, you know, let's say, say we go and we go buy some supplies. And, you know, I mean, I would, I would hope most businesses and people think about that, you know, in their purchasing decisions, you know, like, hey, what I'm, what I'm doing right now is gonna stay inside of Moab, maybe I'm paying ten cents more, maybe I have to get up, out of my chair and go down, drive to the store to go pick it up. But, you know, that, that money is gonna stay here and I think that's, that's very important. And another way we could also look at it is the threshold in that, um, in that, um, when we do get the bids. So, you know, if, if two bids come in, um, and this was Quinn, he had some really good ideas with this. Um, you know, if, if, if our, but if we're budgeting ten thousand dollars for something and one bid comes in at ten thousand two hundred and another bid comes in at nine thousand eight hundred, you know, and the one from nine thousand eight hundred is from Grand Junction, right? We would, we would still go for the ten thousand two, because that money stays. So I think that could be another, another modification that we might be able to make on that purchasing policy. And it's just something I'd like to further explore and, and go ahead and.
That's something Commissioner Clapper often really pushed for, so I think that's a great mark.
I, I, yeah. I'd be all in favor of that also.
Didn't even know it was a problem.
Sure, Quinn, go ahead.
Well, I just, I, as we talk about this, and I don't, well, um, if, if you speak, look at it, it works, I promise. This, just so everybody knows, because I've explained this three times already today, this mic does not broadcast into this room, this mic only goes to the offline stuff. So if you can't hear it, the speaker is here, that's why, it just goes to the TVs. Uh, um, but so, yeah, we need to, we need to come up with, I, I'd say we as a collective group, you guys need to make a decision, but a, a percentage by which something needs to be within in order to then go with a local preference. And the reason that is important is because we don't want, we want it spelled out, so we have a very robust purchasing policy, so it's streamlined, so that not everything comes to you guys, like, say, yeah, just in a Brian example, this was two hundred dollars over budget. Then does that qualify to automatically amend the budget if we gave the way in on that at some point? We just want it to be as robust and streamlined as possible, so we need to go off with kind of an X percentage, if it's five percent more, it will go local. I mean, whatever percentage you guys want, but then we do wanna know, like, if it's close to the budget amount, if we're gonna go over budget. Does the percentage change, does it not? These are just discussions we have to keep that.
Right.
And I think it'd also be really helpful, we looked at, I'm sure that there's a lot of other counties that have these local per, uh, uh, um, local preferences. And I think it would be good to look at them and see kind of where that's fallen, right?
Yeah, and the state does have a policy, the state's purchasing policy where it. Yeah, and the state does have a policy, the state's purchasing policy, where if you put a bid out and a local contractor bids, but they're higher and you get a lower bid from out of state, you can then ask the local contractor to match the bid from out of state. And that's, that's actually a good way to add that in if we wanted to work on the percentage. Either way, those are just options, so.
So how do you wanna perceive, Brian? Like, is this, do you wanna work?
You know, if, if Quinn, actually, it seems like you have quite a bit of knowledge. Is this something that you'd be willing to? Is this something you'd be willing to tackle with me?
Yeah, the, the only thing I'll add to that is I think all of us know all kinds of people here and I'm just gonna pick on the two that would probably benefit the most, the paper products and everything that come from Teresa King's business and Desert West, you know, I mean, the employees alone that we're helping when we keep that money local. And it goes also to the grocery stores and to our coffee shops and everything, but just those two here.
The school district um has, you know, we, we use, every, everybody has been a lot more in depth Desert West, so it's, it's agreed, you know.
I mean, we know people that this Somebody that's, you know, outside of our circle, we all know. All right, I will look for a motion to go into closed session. Is that?
So I um, and I'm right next to you. Um I also, when I was thinking about this policy and I don't know if this is the proper time to bring it up, but um as I look at the, the busy times of year that the food trucks come in from out of town, so they buy their product out of town. They come into our community, they take the business from our current vendors and then they take the money back out of town. And so, I mean, I know that doesn't fit in this purchasing policy, but it's the same kind of idea. And I don't know where uh, where our policies on food trucks are, but you know, when they come and pop down, say, right in front of the branding iron, you know, and then they're having burgers right there. And they're from Grand Junction and they bought their food at Sam's Club, came over, sell the food, take the business from the branding iron and then um take that money back to Grand Junction. And so that's something that I would like to look at as well. And I and I guess I'll figure out how that goes, but that's, that's I, an idea of keeping that money local.
No, totally agree. Yeah, I, any, any, anything we can do to keep money in our community is, is a win for every single of us without a doubt.
You know, do you know how those, that process?
The food truck, I, I don't know. I mean, that's how do they get permitted? I mean, do they get, they, it seems like they'd have to get a, either a city or a county business permit to do business. Right?
So we have to look at like the way that our business license
Bypass in that.
They probably are, just, yeah, just totally.
When I even noticed last year that maybe the city kicked him out and they just went out into the county, like I noticed some downtown in the city and then maybe the code law, code enforcement bothered them and they went out in the city. So I know enforcement's hard on some things, but if we are giving out business licenses to them, I just think we should
Well, they, they also have to get passed through the health department. They'd have to get a, a certificate, health certificate for sure to get it.
While I'm on that health board, I'll ask them.
The whole Utah is the same.
Yeah, right. Okay, gotcha. All right, so can I look for a motion to go into closed session? I'll move to go into closed session to discuss acquisition or sale of real property. And a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Hadler, seconded by Commissioner Martinez and all in favor? It is unanimous to go into closed session. Thank you, Andrew, and have a good evening.
No. It's seven o'clock. We're doing pretty good.